All right, then I've got six o'clock straight up. So let us call the city council work session for July 20th, 2020 to order a roll call, please. Sue.
Uh, councillor Piros.
Here.
Uh, councillor Martinez Plancarte.
Here.
Councillor, or Mayor Rogers.
Here.
Councillor Bacon.
Here.
Councillor Finley. And then I'm gonna wait on Elise in case she comes a little late. Okay.
All right, very good. Um, all right, folks, review of the council agenda and meeting, anything you would like to comment on the, on the business session? All right, hearing none, let's move along. Uh, the council business item may fund financial statements, any comments or questions regarding that? All right, again, hearing none, onto presentations. This is a briefing on Newburgh Urban Renewal Feasibility Study. Uh, Mr. Rux, good evening.
Doug?
Doug needs to unmute himself.
Again, there we go. I said, thank you. This has been a long time to get to this particular point. So this evening we have Elaine Howard, our consultant on our urban renewal program with us. And we have John Bridges, our urban renewal chair for our ad hoc advisory committee. So we're gonna go through some slides tonight. So Elaine and I will provide some tag team. And John is here to provide comments and color commentary from the committee's perspective. Next slide. All right. So what we'd like to go over with you over the course of the next forty-five minutes or so is council goals, planning that we've done to date, the briefings that we provided to council, uh, the citizens advisory committee meetings, briefings that we've done before the planning commission. And then we'll talk about the boundary, uh, what we've done for community engagement. And then Elaine will talk through the feasibility study and then we'll get to next steps. Next. So as we talked about on July 6th, council has a goal to create and support an urban renewal plan and authority. So we've been engaged in this for a number of years, but we really in earnest since January of 2020. Uh, we moved forward and this council goal was created in February of 2020. Next. So as we shared with you before, we have a number of activities that led up to doing the urban renewal feasibility study itself. So this all started with economic development strategy that we did in 2016. So we started that work in 2015, finished it in 2016. We did the Newburgh Strategic Tourism Plan. We did the Transportation System Plan update. And then we finished in December of 2016 with the Downtown Improvement Plan. 2017, we worked on the Water Master Plan. 2018, the Wastewater Master Plan. When we got to 2019, we updated the Economic Development Strategy. And that was an outcome out of the Community Visioning Program that we finished with in August of 2019. We got to September of 2019, uh, council accepted the Riverfront Master Plan. And then in the summer of 2019, we completed the Housing Needs Analysis. So that leads us to where we're at here in 2020. We're currently working on an Economic Opportunities Analysis and we're working on the Urban Renewal Feasibility Study. So there's a lot of groundwork that went into place over the last five years to get to where we're at today. And I've shared with you before, what's important is that the urban renewal concept came up in the Economic Development Strategy, the Downtown Plan, Community Visioning Program, the Riverfront Plan, and the Housing Needs Analysis. So it's repeatedly come up as a potential economic development tool. Next. As I shared with you, uh, on July 6th, we've had a variety of council briefings that have occurred. And so this started back in October of 2015. Uh, when we started talking about, uh, funding for the program, where would it come from? And that decision was made to come out of Fund 14, the Economic Development Fund. In October 7th of 2019, uh, gave council a background briefing on urban renewal in its broader context. November of 2019, we brought forward a resolution for reimbursement. And that means that if an urban renewal program is created, it's that the Urban Renewal Agency would pay back to Fund 14, the $100,000 that we budgeted for the, for the project. December, we did the consultant awards, we went out for an RFP, Elaine Howard Consulting LLC was successful. Then in January, uh, council did the advisory committee appointments. When we got to May, we did a work session with council and explained where we are at to date. And then July 6th, I gave you the council goal briefing. Next slide, please. With the Citizens Committee. We started orientation on January 23rd with the committee, again broadly talking about urban renewal, uh, how it's been used in Oregon, how it might be a tool for the city of Newburgh. In February, we did some background work with the committee. In March, we were working on the boundary. And as we shared in an earlier work session with you, there were iterations in the development of that boundary. We started with the Downtown Improvement Plan and the Riverfront Plan. Uh, the downtown area expanded slightly, uh, included River Street and Blaine Street. And then some addition of some high-density residential land on the west side of Blaine Street, uh, south of Fifth. Then we started working on projects and there was a long list. We drew projects from the Downtown Plan, the Riverfront Plan, Transportation Water, Wastewater, Stormwater Plans. In April, uh, Elaine and Nick provided information on the financial analysis. In June, we, the committee saw the draft feasibility study and then on June 29th, they saw the final feasibility study. Next. We did two briefings with the planning commission, one on May 14th and July 9th to keep them up to speed. There's a process, if this moves forward, is that, uh, it goes back in front of the planning commission and they actually have to find that the urban renewal plan is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. So it was important to keep them briefed and up to date what was going on and also provided some additional opportunities for community engagement. Next slide, please. So this is the final boundary. Uh, as I mentioned, you can see that we have the downtown area towards the north. Um, it goes over to the railroad tracks. Uh, it expanded a little bit to the south. One of the principles was to include the full width of streets. So we went to the east side of River Street, north side of Sheridan. Uh, then we went down and picked up to the south side of Third Street. As I mentioned earlier, we picked up that high-density residential area along Blaine Street on the west side. Uh, that is underdeveloped. We got River Street that comes all the way down tonight, Blaine comes down tonight. And then it's the entirety of the Riverfront Study area. Next slide, please. So, community engagement. We started this process off knowing that we needed to engage the community and keep them informed. Of course, we ran into the coronavirus pandemic, that changed our model. Uh, we were not able to do public open houses as we had anticipated. Uh, but we did have information up on our website and we kept up fresh. We had JLA, who's a subconsultant, and they put together a fact sheet. We've shared that with you before. And that's a two-page, it was done in both English and Spanish. And so that's been up on the website. We worked on videos, uh, because we were not able to do community open houses. Uh, Elaine Howard, uh, put together a slide deck with a voiceover to explain urban renewal in more detail. And so these are examples of the English and the Spanish version of the flyers that we distributed out. And if you scan the QR code with your smartphone, it would take you to the six videos. Um, we distributed the flyers at Wednesday Market. We distributed approximately 450 of the flyers. Um, I know I did it one night, John was there, handed it out another night. Um, committee members who did the distribution of the flyers indicated positive feedback. Uh, we had a few that said that they'd received the flyer the previous week, uh, Wednesday Market. We also sent it out to the Rotary and they distributed it to their membership, to Kiwanis, to the City Club. Uh, the Chamber ran for a series of a month in their, uh, weekly newsletter, uh, information which had this flyer. So you could link back to the videos. And then we sent it to the Ministerial Association as a way to, uh, get the different congregations to share it with their various memberships. Next slide, please. So this is the fact sheet that I was referencing just a minute ago. And so it walks through and it talks about urban renewal, you know, what is it? Uh, how does it work? Why are we considering it? And then, of course, we had a map, a different color version than one I just showed you. Uh, kind of an idea of where it came from and then the timeline of putting together the feasibility study itself. Next slide, please. So I've mentioned these videos and so in detail, it, it talks about what is urban renewal? Why we use it? Where would it be? Where we're at in the process? How does it impact taxing districts? How does it impact the school district? Because that's always a big question. Uh, and then how are the funds distributed to an urban renewal agency? And as I've mentioned, I've gotten positive feedback from the videos. So I'd like to thank Elaine and Scott for doing that body of work. I know it was a lot to do, but again, it was the way to supplant the fact that we were not able to do community open houses. Next slide. So this is the group, so we, I mentioned, we were out at the farmer's market. Uh, the Newburgh Downtown Coalition has been involved, they are on the committee. They help distribute information to businesses and citizens who were coming into the downtown. I mentioned the Chamber had it in their newsletter. Uh, and then the service clubs that we distributed the information to as well. Next. So this is where I'm going to turn it over to Elaine. She's gonna get into the, uh, the bread and butter, so to speak, of urban renewal and the feasibility study. So Elaine, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Doug. So the feasibility study was charged to determine four main issues. Um, first, if the boundary, proposed boundary meets the statutory assessed value and acreage limitations to establish that blight occurs, that would allow you to establish an urban renewal agency and adopt an urban renewal plan to examine the financial feasibility and to examine the impacts on the taxing districts. Next slide. The proposed area that Doug showed you on the map is 16.13% of the total city acreage. The limitation by statute is 25%, so it's well below that statutory limitation. The assessed value of the potential area is about 7.5%, so also well below the 25% statutory limitation. Next slide. On, uh, making a determination of blight, blight is officially defined in ORS 457. And typically, the finding of blight in new urban renewal areas relates to underdevelopment or undeveloped properties, infrastructure needs and buildings needing upgrading. Um, especially in downtown or renewal areas and areas like your riverfront area that is largely underdeveloped. These three conditions of blight are the conditions that are cited in the actual ordinance to adopt an urban renewal plan if indeed you get to that step. So in terms of whether or not we are saying that the area could be determined to meet the standards of the statute, um, there are vast infrastructure needs within the area. There are many underdeveloped and undeveloped properties and there are many buildings that are in need of upgrading. So we feel like there is no, uh, problem with making a determination of blight. Next slide. On examining the financial feasibility, I worked with Nick Popanik of Tiberius Solutions. Nick and I have worked together for the last 10-plus years on urban renewal. Um, Nick likes to look at a range of different growth rates for assessed value within the area. So in this feasibility study, we looked at four, five, six, and seven percent growth rates within the area and then projected what the capacity would be. And we've highlighted that in yellow on this slide. For dollars in today's dollars, $20, $20 for doing projects within the area, depending upon which growth rate we think, um, best fits the urban renewal area. We, we did not recommend one specific growth rate, um, to use. Uh, if you determine to move ahead with the development of an urban renewal plan, we would, with the input of the advisory committee and city staff, determine which growth rate to use. At that point, we have to specify one growth rate that we all feel comfortable with in, in setting what the maximum indebtedness would be. So you can see from this chart that the capacity for doing projects in $20, $20 ranges between 27.9 million to a 7% assessed value growth rate. That brings you up to $71 million in today's dollars. The row right above the capacity, the yellow highlighted row is the row that's called maximum indebtedness. Maximum indebtedness has to be established in an urban renewal plan. And it is the total amount of money that you may use on projects, programs and administration over the life of the urban renewal plan. It does not include interest paid on debt. So if you decide to move forward and urban renewal plan, what a stick, would, we would determine, uh, which interest rate best to use. And with that, we would establish a maximum indebtedness. And from that, we would know what the capacity for doing projects is. Next slide. We also were charged with examining the impacts to the taxing districts. This slide just shows cumulative impacts. Within the feasibility study, we have these broken out by year, by taxing district. Uh, and so these are estimates given the different annual growth rates, the four, five, six, and seven percent. Um, you can see the city of Newburgh is right in the middle of that first row of impacts. Um, and shows that the impacts range between $10.8 million to $28.2 million um, over what we looked at, um, was a 30-year plan, right Doug?
Correct.
The important thing to note, and that's why we've put this note here along with these, um, charts, is that the school district and the Willamette Education Service District are funded a little differently from the other taxing districts. And so in urban renewal, we say that they are not directly impacted by urban renewal or tax increment finding as their property tax revenues are put into the state school fund. And the state school fund has other funding sources that go into the state school fund. So urban renewal has an indirect, uh, impact on schools and education service districts. The legislature establishes a per purple, per pupil funding amount across the state. And that funding amount is established and filled through those variety of sources that go into the state school fund. So that's why we've put those two taxing districts below the other taxing districts. The other taxing districts are a direct impact. It means that they would potentially receive less revenue over time as that revenue would go to the urban renewal agency. The school district and the education service district are an indirect impact. That impact is on the state school fund, not directly on those districts. Next slide. In order to understand how the financial feasibility that we looked at relates to potential projects, your staff put together project lists that included projects from your downtown improvement plan and the Riverfront Master Plan. And then we looked at, um, and administration amount over the 30-year, potential 30-year life of the plan. So though, if you put all of those projects, uh, together, the estimated costs were between 100 and a little under 116 million to 117.5 million dollars. And when we looked at the financial feasibility, uh, we didn't have any financial feasibility that would show that we could gain that amount of money through an urban renewal area. That is not unusual. Urban renewal is not seen as a source of funding to fund all projects within a city within an urban renewal area. Typically, urban renewal is used to leverage other funds. So to leverage funds that might come through ODOT or through other grants or through, um, city funding itself. So if you make a decision to move ahead, one of the challenges for the advisory committee and staff as we would put together an urban renewal plan would do, be to determine which projects to actually include in the urban renewal plan and at what potential funding amounts. And those funding amounts aren't set in stone. What is set in stone is that maximum indebtedness number. That is the total amount of money you can spend on projects and programs. But within that maximum indebtedness, you're able to move money from one project to another. Because as we all know, over 30 years, different funding sources will come available and you'll have different opportunities for different things to happen. So we, we set up a plan, um, if told to move ahead, that is financially feasible at the time that you adopt the plan. But that plan is flexible over that 30-year timeframe. Next slide. So we put all of that information into two documents for you. Uh, one is, because the actual feasibility study became a very big document because we attached all of our backup material, we decided it was important, um, to do also an executive summary. So that executive summary really addresses those kinds of main issues that we talked about, which are, what kind of money might you be able to raise through urban renewal? And what are those impacts on the taxing districts? And could you establish an urban renewal area that is blighted? That executive summary is also contained in the full feasibility study. But the full feasibility study goes into all of the different backup tables and documents that were provided to the advisory committee. Next slide. So the full feasibility study document contains all of these different sections. So we started by putting the definition at the beginning. We thought it would be helpful for, uh, people to know terminology. Uh, we put in the executive summary. We put in those two fact sheets because we thought sometimes people may decide to only read the fact sheets. And, and if that's all they're going to read, we wanted to make sure we had those at the front so that they could read them. Um, and then we went through most of what Doug has just gone through in, um, the prior slides on the briefing. So, uh, background, uh, citizen advisory committee meetings, city council briefings, planning commission briefings, public engagement, uh, the boundary option, the, listed the full list of potential projects. And then went into the basics of how Nick and his group do the financial feasibility analysis. So looking at the tax rates, forecasting growth and assessed value, um, calculating the tax increment revenue, um, talking about potential revenue sharing, um, many tables that talk about each scenario, four, five, six, and seven percent and what those potential impacts on an annual basis would be to all taxing districts. Uh, we have a section just on the blight findings, um, a section on what next steps would be and then links to the videos and then attachments from all of the, um, advisory committee briefings and the city council briefings. So it's a very thorough document. Making sure that we, I guess, have dotted our i's and crossed our t's and told you everything that we have done to get to the point where we are now. Next slide. I think this goes back to Doug. Unmute Doug.
So this is why I want to take an opportunity for John to kind of share the perspective from the advisory committee of the work that they've been going through for the last six months. John?
Yeah, thanks, uh, for giving me the opportunity. Um, you know, from my perspective, this reaches back, uh, more than just the last six months. It reaches back to our last urban renewal, uh, district attempt. Um, but what I will say about our process is, uh, I want to remind the group that, uh, the members on the committee included the affected taxing districts. And what is missing from this little slide is that when we had our last meeting, uh, this motion was passed unanimously. Uh, so we had concurrence amongst everybody in terms of representatives from the business community, uh, which was a broad spectrum of business communities. We also had Walton Valley Fire and Rescue. We had this, uh, school district there, we had the park district there. And everybody is supportive of the, uh, process moving forward. I don't really have any color commentary. I, I didn't think of any real quick. I do have blue cufflinks and a kind of purplish-red tie. That's all I got for young color. But I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any. Um, but we're certainly looking forward to moving forward, even given the knowledge that it means more volunteer work on our part.
Okay, thank you, John. Um, in addition to the work that the, uh, citizens committee's been involved in, since their last meeting, I have done outreach to the taxing districts. So a letter went out to each of the taxing districts. Um, as John had mentioned, is that CPRD, TVFNR and the school district were on or, and are on the advisory committee. Uh, but we also had to reach out to Yam Hill County, so a lot of conservation, Portland Community College, Willamette Education Service District and so forth. So letters went out to each of those entities. Uh, I have had some meetings with them. What I sent them was a letter and I sent them the link so that they could actually go and watch the videos uh, and review what urban renewal is about. We sent them the fact sheets as well. In the conversations I have had with overlapping districts to date, uh, we've just been sharing the information. The, uh, there will be more of that. I still got some meetings scheduled up, uh, as to move forward with all of this. Just giving timing and with COVID-19, it's difficult to get some of the schedules put together. So as the chair had mentioned, that on the 29th, the advisory committee reviewed that final plan. They had two options for a recommendation. Uh, one is what you see on your screen. Um, essentially is, uh, city council accept the feasibility study and, uh, direct staff to create an urban renewal agency. So what you see on your screen is their exact words, uh, for the recommendation they came up with. And as John said, that was a unanimous vote. Next slide, please. So what are these next steps? So on your business meeting, there is an agenda item and you have two options in front of you. One is that you could accept the feasibility study and direct staff to form an urban renewal agency. Or two, you could not accept the feasibility study. If you do not accept the feasibility study, the analysis on urban renewal stops. Um, and the committee would no longer meet. If by accepting it, uh, there's another big body of work to do. So we'd be looking at coming back in second meeting in August to form an urban renewal agency. We would continue on what I call phase three, which is preparing the urban renewal plan and report. Kind of a rough timeline is have that done by the end of the calendar year. And then there's a very long four month plus process to go through with overlapping districts. And we shared some of this with you before and the steps and so forth are one of the attachments in the feasibility study itself. So with that, we're going to stop and open it up for questions from council members.
Go ahead, Rick.
Oh, no, go ahead Denise. You got it.
No, I just wanted to know, what does that look like every year in our budget? Like what? Our general fund budget, does that have any consequences there?
Yes. So Matt, Matt Zuck was not able to be with us this evening. He's been tracking along with this project as well. And when we last spoke is if the council accepts the feasibility study is that he would then plug this into the five year financial plan. So we'd be able to see what the impacts are. If you look in the report itself, it gives an estimate on an annual basis about what the impact would be to the city. And it starts off small as urban renewal programs do. And of course, it grows in that amount over the thirty year period. Elaine, anything you want to add to that? So councillor, yes, we generally looked at it, but we do not have all of the specifics yet. But if you go back to one of the earlier slides, as an example, if you went with a six percent growth rate, that impact over thirty years would be about twenty one million. If you went with a seven percent growth rate, it would be a little over twenty eight million. But again, it was over a thirty year period.
This is Elaine. I think the most important thing to understand is three percent growth is allowed by statute on properties everywhere. And if an urban renewal area was formed, from the time it was formed, that three percent growth would go to the urban renewal agency. So whatever percentage of that three percent growth for just this area, the city would not get. Anything above that three percent is growth that you can look at really to say a lot of that happens because you're able to do urban renewal projects within the area that cause and help facilitate new growth that wouldn't have happened but for the formation of an urban renewal area. So when we look at, we have to develop these tables that say what that projection would be. But I think the reality is we think you have opportunity for great growth, especially in your riverfront area because it is undeveloped. But that area is not going to develop fully unless you're able to put that infrastructure in. And that infrastructure will come in because of your ability to use urban renewal funds within that area. So that's an important thing to consider as you move ahead and think about the impacts to the taxing jurisdictions.
And I would add to that is, you know, back to one of the earlier slides is in the riverfront area, when we put that plan together, it has about a little under forty nine million dollars worth of capital improvements, roads, sewer, water, storm drainage. Again, as Elaine said earlier, if you look at the growth rates, you look at this potential projects of a little under a hundred and sixteen to a little under a hundred and eighteen million. Urban renewal cannot fund all of them. It's, as she indicated, there's a process and a winnowing process of what are the key projects that would leverage to bring and attract new development, put in new buildings to create new assessed value and create new employment opportunities.
Stephanie?
Yeah, I'm just wondering what you think will be the biggest hurdle for sort of inviting our community to come along with us on this? If we accept and move forward with this, and what can council and councillors do to sort of ease that process and help that process along?
John, you want to provide a little flavor from the history perspective?
Yeah, I'll do that. So I guess one, one thing that has changed from past experiences is there's been some, I think, positive changes in the law. One aspect of when the city did it last time is that there was a more direct impact on the school districts. And so that's now been eliminated. So we really have a message there that we want to make sure we communicate loud and often. It's difficult because it's not simple. But, you know, because the state funds our schools on a per pupil basis, they have not no impact, but they have very negligible impact as a result of the establishment urban renewal district. It's certainly my hope that city council moves us to this next step. And then the end of the next step is hopefully you adopting an urban renewal plan. And if you do adopt that, and I'm hopeful that you do that outright. Theoretically, you have the right to refer it to a vote. I don't think that's a good idea. But even if you don't refer it to a vote, and if it's adopted, then a person who's an electorate or an elector in our jurisdiction can collect signatures and have it referred to the ballot. And that's the experience we've had two times in the past, one that I was involved in and one back in the seventies, I think. You know, it becomes difficult at that point and it difficult from a variety perspectives. One is you as a city, you can't advocate. So you have to have a groups like myself and other groups be the advocate. The bigger issue is it's easy to mislead. And in fact, the last election cycle, the opponents said that this process would raise everybody's taxes. And that's just not right. But in explaining why that's not right, you have to have a good seven to ten minute conversation and really explain what the process is. And sometimes people won't listen to that. But, you know, the most I think the most you can do is try with as many people as you can. I will say that the same petitioner filed both the petition to refer it in the seventies and in the two thousands. And that petitioner is no longer here. And so I'm hopeful frankly, that that means that there won't be any concerted effort to refer it to voters.
Elaine, could you explain a little bit more about on the topic of it does not increase your taxes? It's a division of taxes of the taxing districts because that's where people get confused.
So the way urban renewal works since measures five, forty seven, and fifty is that the amount of money that goes to the urban renewal agency is gained through reducing the amount of money that goes to all the different taxing jurisdictions. So we, in those videos that we put together, we show what a property tax bill would be for a property with urban renewal and without urban renewal and try to get people to understand that if you have a renewal, you don't pay anything more in taxes, but the other taxing districts get a little less in taxes. And if you're in a city that has an urban renewal area and that urban renewal area goes away, finishes, people don't pay less in property taxes because urban renewal has gone away, the taxing districts get more in taxes. So the impact of urban renewal is not on a property taxpayer. It is on the taxing districts. And as Chair Bridges noted, we had the main taxing districts other than the county with us going through all of this information and they have voted to move this forward into further planning. So we don't have opposition from those taxing jurisdictions at this point.
Other questions, folks? Comments? So, you know, Elaine, you just mentioned, thank you, folks. Thank you to you and Doug and to John. Thank you. You know, thank you very much for this very informative presentation and all of the work that you put in. So thank you. Aside from it getting referred to the voters, are there other hurdles here that could derail this? Could, could one of the taxing entities, i.e. you mentioned the county has not been involved in the discussion, could they veto this?
The county may not veto it. They don't, the city council has the authority to adopt an urban renewal plan on their own. The county could oppose it. They, they could ask for changes to it. They don't have the power through a vote of their own to stop it. And when I said they weren't involved, they weren't involved in the advisory committee meetings, but I think Doug has done a good job of keeping them updated. So they know what's going on. He's been briefing them. They just weren't part of the committee.
Yeah, Mayor. So as the committee was meeting, I actually went out to the county board of commissioners and gave them a presentation on urban renewal. And I've been keeping in contact with the county administrator. And I had a recent conversation with him as well as one of the overlapping districts we reached out to. We went through the executive summary. We talked through all of that. He has offered to have me come back and talk with the board of commissioners again. Of course, they're like us. They're doing Zoom meetings, so we will be able to do it face to face. One of the other things that I've talked with the county about, and Elaine is aware of this as well, is as we're implementing the riverfront plan. And so we had the joint work session with you and the planning commission on the comp plan and the code changes for that. I'm also working on annexation issues. So I've reached out to those property owners that are currently not within the city limits, but within the urban growth boundary and in the potential urban renewal area about annexing. So that includes ODOT for the bypass, Baker Rock, some of the single family properties, the larger lot ones down along the river on the bluff, property owner over off of Wynuski, property owner off of Weatherly Way. And actually CPRD has a piece of property to split within the UGB and out of the UGB. And I've reached out to them. So one of the things we're trying to do is is we move forward with the urban renewal plan, might we be able to have some of these properties that are currently not annexed into the city, annexed into the city, serving two purposes, to advance the riverfront plan as well as to assist the urban renewal plan?
Mayor, I'd also note that there are five, I believe the number is five, five urban renewal districts in Yamhill County right now. And so the county, I think, is already used to how that process works and they understand it because they experience it.
Right. Thank you. So one other question, just so to make sure I understand scope, I guess. We, at the four percent growth rate, you've got a capacity of about twenty eight million. And then I believe it says total indebtedness, if I recall correctly, of about fifty million. So is that the number we should be looking at is if we're looking at a hundred and fifteen million in projects, the fifty million is the, is the direct toward those?
Unfortunately not. Because the dollar amount that we have for projects, let's say it's a hundred and fifteen million, is in today's dollars. It's in twenty twenty dollars. Those projects are going to happen over the thirty year timeframe of the district. We don't get all that money upfront. So to be able to compare apples to apples, we have to take that maximum indebtedness figure and bring it back to twenty twenty dollars. So that's why that number is highlighted. So if you have a hundred and fifty million dollars worth of projects and you use a four percent growth rate, you've got about twenty eight million dollars of money to go towards those projects. We think the four percent growth rate is conservative. We don't think that's a growth rate that you'll use, but we just, we did that for the purpose of being complete and looking at everything.
And we've not yet discussed that.
Correct.
We, we know that we did these four different calculations. And we also looked historically at Newburgh's growth rate, but we intentionally set aside that question. And that's part of the next step is, I mean, I, I think we'll have a pretty vigorous discussion about what that growth rate is. And if I had to guess, I wouldn't, I think it's going to be between one of those two or one of those four percentages. It's not going to be precisely four percent. And so it'll be refined what you have as available funding. And the other thing that everybody needs to keep in mind is, just as you do now, you fund with a variety of mechanisms. It could be SDCs, it could be developer contribution, it could be an LID. It's just, this is really a fun to get things moving and to create more synergy in these different areas.
And as, as the chair has said, is, and if you go into the document and look, you know, the ten year historic growth rate has been four point eight percent, it's pretty close to five. But then you have to take in and look at some of the nuances. And if you look at the riverfront area and if you really look at, a lot of it is the area south of the bypass, there's a lot of growth potential there. Part of that depends on what happens with the mill site. If you look at the downtown area and the study we did back in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen, there's a lot of infill development that can occur. We've talked about redevelopment along Second Street. We've talked about going up with multi-story buildings instead of just one story. And so all of those play into those growth rate factors and which one ends up getting selected between four and seven percent.
And let me say one other thing about county. If we have property within the urban renewal area that is not in the city limits, the county does get a vote on the urban renewal plan. And we have to have their approval on the urban renewal plan if there are properties that are not within the city limits. So I when Doug brought up that other issue of annexations, I want to make clear that if we don't get all those annexations done and there's property within the urban renewal area that's also not in the city, the county does get a vote.
Which I think is a substantial part of the riverfront, right? Or at least the West Rock property?
West Rock is a big piece of that. And so out of the eleven letters that I sent out to property owners, I've talked with over half of them at this point. West Rock is, is one of those as well. And they're still trying to find a purchaser of their site. Do you kind of set them aside and look at the others? Property owners are considering the pluses and the minuses. Some have indicated, well, bringing it in increases the value of my property. Others have said, well, now I have to pay the additional city tax rate. But then they understand that, you know, if they sell their property and they don't annex now, just step back. So when we did the riverfront plan, we had indicated to property owners, if you wanted to annex, as we go through the implementation, you don't have to file the annexation, fill out the form, we will take care of that process, write all the findings and so forth for you. If you wait till later, then you have to annex on your own and that there is a cost associated with that, application costs, consulting costs and so forth. So as I go through each one of these conversations with a property owner for a half hour, forty five minutes, we walk through all of these nuances so they can understand what their choices are.
Let's see. I mean, I guess the other thing is, all right, so the downside, the worst case scenario, I guess, is we do this, we get an urban renewal authority and nothing ever redevelops. The mill never sells. Nothing ever happens down there. Is that the worst case scenario?
Likely, yes. I mean, yeah, could you end up potentially having a mill that sits there for a long time? Potentially, yes. But we're also talking about a thirty year period. So is that going to sit vacant for thirty years?
The way urban renewal finance works, and this has kind of evolved over the years, that banks, you, you, you aren't going to get in debt and not be able to pay off that debt that you get. If you are trying to get, issue a bond or a loan to do projects within the area, banks are going to look at the income stream that you have now, not what you're hoping will happen. not what you're hoping will happen with new development. And they require what's called a debt service coverage ratio. So you protect yourselves and your city and your urban renewal agency by not issuing more debt than you're able to pay with the amount of tax increment revenue that you get off of existing development. And then as that new development occurs, you're able to issue new bonds in the future, but you don't get in over your head on existing debt.
Yeah. If I just play off that, you know, implementing urban renewal plans, playing off of Elaine's comment, working with a company who has a potential project, we'll say Company X has a potential project. They enter into a development agreement with the urban renewal agency and pledge that they're going to build this project by this time. They've got all their funding lined up and so forth. I've used that when we've gone out to debt and talking with bond counsel to help position the urban renewal agency to show that there are all these commitments that are already in place, in the ground. They've got all their vesting, it's all done, to help give some assurance that you can meet your debt coverage over the life of that bond. In the old days, we used to do bonds for 15 years. Now it's much, much shorter timeframe with those bonds that they'll be able to issue on the market.
Now Elaine, you also mentioned that it's very customary to see less capacity than the projects that are on the books. And it looks like, I mean, at the very minimum at 4%, that would be about 25% of the total value of the projects currently. Is that, is that pretty normal or how does that?
I think it depends. I think your city has done an admirable job of all of your pre-planning. So you have a better idea of the needs within your area than many cities with whom I deal. So a lot of times I'm working with the city and they don't really know the full extent of all the projects over time. You've done a great job of identifying those, so that is why your list is so long. But in terms of looking at what your priorities are and what has to be funded with urban renewal, that would happen in the next step. So I don't feel uncomfortable at all about the amount of revenue that you have the capacity for and what it can do within the area, knowing that you've done a great job on all of your planning.
But I think another point on that, Mayor, is that a lot of the projects are in the riverfront area, which is completely brownfield, right? It's completely open and it doesn't have any of that infrastructure. And you're going to have developers to lean on heavily to build infrastructure down there. You're just going to be making maybe strategic investments. And you'll have the ability to be strategic and see, hey, look, if I could link this property over here with the infrastructure, I'll be able to recoup all of that back from the developers that are going to develop down there. And then it just becomes that kind of a domino effect. You pre-fund the infrastructure, which encourages the development. And then the development pays the urban renewal fund back. And then you're able to turn around and say, what's our next strategic infrastructure development?
Well, which brings us to the notion that if anybody at West Rock is listening, hello, Atlanta, really, we'd like to see that piece of property sold. If that could happen for redevelopment, that would be fantastic. So let's hope that gets moving. So there you go.
Yeah. That's just a really complicated sale. That's the problem.
Oh, yeah.
But there is so much other opportunity within our boundary. I don't want to get lost on just that one thing because there's so much other open brownfield development space. And it really, I would hang my hat on the whole picture, not just one property owner.
Right. All right. Any other questions for John or Elaine or Doug? All right, hearing none. Again, thank you all so very much. John, thank you to you and the other nine members of your committee. Thank you so much. Doug and Elaine, this is exciting stuff and we'll hear about it during the business session.
And just, I'm not going to stick around for the business section or call back in. So if there truly is any last-minute questions for me, give them to me now. I always hate being an applicant's lawyer and something comes up during deliberation that nobody asked me. So now's the chance.
Same with me. If you want me to stay for the meeting, let me know and I will. Otherwise, I'll sign off.
At this point, Mayor, I've shared with both John and Elaine, they don't need to be at the business session. We've gone through the work session. Here's all details. My presentation will be relatively brief in the business session and it will be in the hands of the council.
Well, all right. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, John, Elaine. Have a nice evening, right? Stay cool.
All right. You too.
All right. All right, let's adjourn this session and we will get back to it. Let's.
Oh, sure. Sorry.
All right, I think I've got 7:05. So this is the city council business session for July 2020. The meeting is now called to order. A roll call, please, Sue.
Councilor Pirros?
Present.
Councilor Yurinell Holloman?
Here.
Councilor Martinez Plancarte?
Here.
Mayor Rogers?
Here.
Councilor Bacon?
Here.
Councilor Finley?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you very much. All right, the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Let's start with the city manager's report this evening.
Okay. Thank you. So this is one of the longer report days, so I'm going to try to go quickly. But I wanted to start with some news around COVID, since that seems to be the issue that won't go away. We have just some information from the community. We've been working on reimbursements and on trying to make sure that we're able to leverage some funding that's been allocated to the city to further extend our ability to provide relief and to do some other things that will help city staff continue to be productive for the community. So we had already submitted one round of reimbursement. We're in the process of another and are looking to build a list of projects that we can submit for reimbursement. One of them is Archives Building located behind me. So kind of adjacent to City Hall, which we'd like to put some wiring in and essentially get up to snuff for additional workspace. We can accommodate some physical distancing for staff and provide additional workspaces and try to remind them to do their archiving at the same time, maybe. Maybe not. Sue would like that. And then we are also looking at some technology enhancements, remote connectivity for some staff, assuming that telework is going to be an ongoing opportunity that we have. And, you know, essentially trying to work at sort of improving the efficiency of our staff who are working from home. A quick update on sort of the city council vacancies, elections, board and commission vacancies. So right now, as far as I know, unless something's been received this afternoon, we've not yet received applications for the District 4 vacancy. I believe at least a couple information packets were sent out to potential candidates or potential interested residents. There is one vacancy on Citizens Rate Review Committee, which I don't think is an urgent thing to fill, but just putting that out there. For the elections, as you know, Districts 1, 3, and 5 are scheduled for election. So far for District 5, we've received two candidate petitions and I believe both are qualified. And so we've got Merrill Kunkel and Nick Morais, who are in District 5 race right now. That filing period goes until August 17th for anyone interested. So we'll just put that out there. Just a few brief highlights for myself before I move on to some of the other departmental work. I was able to attend the first virtual conference for the Oregon City-County Management Association. So the summer conference was about a 24-hour period or something to that effect of online Zoom conference sessions. Interesting topics, you know, essentially kind of the potpourri of issues that we're all dealing with, you know, around COVID, around the issues related to that, about telework and all the fun things that we're having to pivot in various communities in order to provide service. And then racial justice and citizen engagement and other things like that. Was able to also participate in the first meeting of the Equity Task Force and we'll probably talk a little bit more about that later. And actually, before I leave my stuff, I just wanted to give kudos kind of hard decision that the Newburgh-Dundee Police Association, Public Safety Association made, which I want to just give kudos and some appreciation for. As you all know, in the budget, we did not budget for cost of living adjustments for our staff. Kind of a tough thing to do, given that I think a lot of us have partners and spouses who are impacted financially. So our families are impacted by COVID closures and all kinds of things. And, you know, I just wanted to express appreciation that the association also voted to forego raises for this year. And we've agreed for the next, for this year and the next year for contract. And so I just want to express appreciation for that because I think that's a vote of support for cooperation. We are one organization and we're all sort of taking that hit. And it's painful for us and our families, but it's an important thing to do, both from the budget balancing standpoint, being able to provide service to the community and also, you know, just essentially we're all in this together. So I just want to say thank you. On the HR front, you may see on our websites, the Assistant City Manager position has been posted. We're using the recruiting firm, Novak Consulting Group. And they are helping us with intake and review of applicants. Understand there's been some significant interest already, which is fabulous. That position, interested parties would need to apply by August 10th. So that position is out for a couple more weeks. And we've got the flyer on our website, which will take you to the Novak Consulting Group if you're interested in applying. Public Works Director is scheduled, I believe, to be posted in the next day or so. We were just working on some final touches for that. And so we'll get that rolling as well. So with the new fiscal year, trying to get moving and, you know, get some people hired. Related to that, I just wanted to kind of provide a real quick highlight as well that we received 35 applications for an on-call, no benefits, library assistant position. And that's sort of a, I think possibly some sort of harbinger, I guess, for what's out there in the economy. You know, it's not necessarily the highest-paid job. And we've never received that many applications for a position using the Niogo system, which we've only been using for about two years. So it's not like forever. We haven't, you know, received that many applications for a position. But it's significant, I think, because I think it does indicate, you know, the number of people who are looking for positions these days in Newburgh. And so happy to have the applicants and I am hoping that we'll get a fabulous person into the city organization and just, you know, just something to keep an eye on, I think, for us as leaders in the community. Also want to highlight the Planning Manager position so that Doug is able to get some help. I think you said that already once this evening. And so on some level, wanted to promote that position. It's also receiving a lot of attention on Niogo and that's one that we're taking applications through that system and is posted, I think, until the 5th of August. So we're looking for, you know, again, great people to add to the organization. Community engagement, hopefully, if you've been in any businesses in town, hopefully you've seen the Mask Up Newburgh signage. And want to give kudos for getting that campaign going. And I want to also thank those who participated in the video, which I think has been put out to the community as well. You know, I think generally, you know, Councilor Pirros maybe had the best inclusion or best videos as part of that. So I want to give extra kudos, maybe. I certainly wasn't super happy about my own appearance, but happy to partake. And then we have also been working, Lacy's been working with the team internally on C Click Fix. And that's something I've mentioned before, which will be awesome. It's an application that people can download on their phones and a way to submit a photo and a geolocation for issues within the city. And so working with a team internally, a public works staff, police, code compliance, and traffic safety, and really just trying to think about ways we can, you know, I think it fits well to our customer service goals, along with some other efforts we have in the city to just, you know, make sure that we're more attentive to things. We're not always omniscient, you know? So getting pictures from residents that help us know exactly where things are that need to get worked on should help us in providing better service. We did also, Lacy put out an RFP this last couple days for a communication consultant and that was something that was budgeted, trying to provide some strategic assistance to Lacy and to the city and also to have some help with creating some collateral materials and doing some other things related to public engagement. So hopefully something that'll help build capacity for the city in getting our message out and doing outreach to the community. In Public Works, there's a lot, a lot going on as always. And just a few highlights. Let's see, Crestview Drive bid should be out soon. There's some last-minute revisions that they're working through before putting that out to bid. And then construction on that project would be complete sometime next year. Actually, sorry, in 2022. And Elliott Road, the design is continuing. So that is still being evaluated, the various road alignments and the options on Elliott Road. It's also something that I believe they're working with the property owners and trying to reduce the right-of-way impact. And so we continue to work through the comments we got on that project. Construction on that is scheduled to start in the spring of 2021. So there's still plenty of time to work through those details. Construction at the Public Safety Building, the roof strengthening project is scheduled to begin this month with completion by the end of August. Seismic Resiliency Study should be completed sometime this next month. There are some master planning and other efforts underway related to the, excuse me, to the riverfront projects. Stormwater Master Plan is under review. Safe Route to School Planning Project continues. And the Solar Farm Project is out for RFP, for request for proposals. And so those should be submitted and reviewed sometime at the end of this month. In maintenance, working on roadsides and area storm detention facilities, repainting of the yellow curb markings or repair and replacement of thermoplastic pavement markings, the curb line weed removal, cleaning and repainting of fire hydrants and assisting on other grounds maintenance. So keeping very busy in maintenance as well. And then I just wanted to note, because I think it's come before council before, we have received and started modifications to two storage containers that we received from Federal Surplus. And those are related to some of the, are the project around emergency resilience in partnership with some of the churches in town. And so they're being outfitted for storage of supplies, emergency supplies, and with water supplies as well. And so it is exciting movement there on getting that grant actually into material and then putting it in, into the community. Quickly as well, that, excuse me, the, just public service announcement that the deadline has passed for the first test notice for backflow prevention testing. And I understand that that's a state requirement. So we're sending out the second notice. And I believe there are only about 500 or so of those going out. But we definitely appreciate response from residents who are getting those. And that way we don't have to send out a third notice. Let's see, just in a note of partnership, the water treatment plant worked with Cory from the library on a short video about water treatment systems. So hopefully that's something that kids in the community will see and enjoy. So hopefully that's something that kids in the community will see and enjoy, a little bit of a local education. Wanted to highlight as well compost, compost sales are closed for now. We're, we had to replenish the supply, the mountain of compost is gone. So we had to actually replenish the supply, which is insane considering how big a pile that was. And so expecting sometime probably the end of July that we'll reopen the sales and we'll have a kiosk for payments. So it won't be free anymore, but we will do the physical distancing using a chip reader and and card machine. So we'll work on on the technical details there and make sure that we're being really safe in how we do that. But should be back online towards the end of the month. Quickly, community development. Did I mention that Doug's plate is really full? Sorry, Doug. The implementation efforts for the Riverfront Master Plan, you know, are underway, I think has been mentioned before. And along with the the special joint council and planning commission meeting that we had on the ninth of July. Letters have been sent to about annexation and, you know, I think it was already mentioned, engineering is working on some of the master plans to support that as well. So that dovetails to our previous item. Urban renewal feasibility has been, meeting has been held. We're ready to make a decision in the top today and and move that project to the next step. And Doug's been out in the community making presentations, as I think he mentioned earlier. And then, as I understand it, we have not just received inquiries, but potentially applications for outdoor dining and wine tasting. Including public sidewalks and parking lots and things like that. So looking forward to seeing some of that come to fruition and hopefully, you know, maximize the square footage, the space that we have for businesses to operate in the community. The library right now is operating as the modified schedule that has been since they started back up after COVID or during COVID. I guess we're still during COVID, right? That the library is noon to six, Tuesday through Saturday every week. Just a quick snapshot of kind of what the numbers are typically in June, there would have been about twenty-five thousand people going through the library. This June, we saw six thousand seventy-eight, so about twenty-four percent of the foot traffic. And maybe that's a good thing in the sense that the request has been sending one family member to collect anything from the library. And so we'll just assume a family of four, maybe they're sending that one person to come through. And so maybe we're actually seeing a normal level of foot traffic with compliance with our requests around physical distancing and COVID. In any event, what we are seeing as well, the library is an increase in the digital checkouts and e-circulation. And so it's actually, according to Will, e-circulation is running almost double to pre-COVID. So we are still seeing a high utilization of the library, which is, which is great to see. And also for those not wanting to go into the library themselves, there is still a curbside drop off or pickup. And that has been expanded, so trying to accommodate those who are not wanting to go into the library or not able to go into the library to pick up materials. And then I guess the final thing, Will likes to include graphics and pictures when he provides information for my report. And so there is a lovely picture of a Lego creation inspired by the Loch Ness Monster for your viewing pleasure. And that's part of the Literary Lego Challenge that has been broadcast every Friday. And so maybe if we all gather our Legos together, we can participate this coming Friday and come up with something cool. That is, that is it. I think there's a lot going on.
Right. Thank you, Dan. Questions for our city manager? All right, hearing none, Dan. Thank you. Thank you so much. Next on our agenda, Council Appointments five A, Consent to the Mayor's Appointment of Members to the Housing Needs Analysis Citizens Advisory Committee. And if I might, I will let you know who those folks are. Jessica Kane, Todd Engel, Charlie Harris, Kurt Walker, Corey Zilsdorf, Jack Cris, and Abishah Stone. So if we have a motion, that would be wonderful.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we can, we approve, we consent to your, we consent to your appointment of those members of the Housing Needs. Citizens Advisory Committee. My glasses and my screen view don't, don't work. So excuse my blindness.
Second.
And Stephanie with the second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor signify by raising your left hand. All right, that's unanimous. Thank you all very much. And thank you to the members who have just signed up for this committee. Not to get too much on the soapbox, but I'll do it anyway. Dan already mentioned that, you know, we, we do have a vacancy on citizens rate review. But I'd like to point out that by my most recent tally, not including you all. We currently have sixty-six volunteers serving on city committees, ad hoc and permanent. And we'll talk a little bit later in the meeting how we we are likely to add to that number with another committee that Doug would like to have seated. So again, for those listening in, it is vitally important that if you want to be involved. This is a great way to be involved with a participation in a citizens advisory committee. All right, moving right along then on to public comments. First off, I guess we've got Issue Tracker. Dan, aside from the flag, is there anything else on Issue Tracker?
So there is, actually. We clarified an item, and I think I was correct. We'll, we'll find out if I'm correct in putting it back on, which was having, we had had an item for economic development. And we refined that to a discussion of a tourism strategy. I think that had been the intent when we had the discussion, if I recall correctly, again, correct me if I'm wrong. And that would need to be scheduled at a future date.
Okay, sounds good. All right, and now do we have public comment now? Sue, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lamb, I'm gonna unmute you. So, Mr. Lamb, are you there? I'm not hearing him.
Not hearing him, I'm seeing him, but not hearing him. Good evening, Kelvin.
Can you hear me?
There you are.
Put the phone down and we'll go via the PC.
All right.
Okay, greetings, Mary, excuse me, Mayor Rogers from council. I'm Kelvin Lamb, homeowner in the Greens subdivision. And I want to call this opportunity to present the comments of the council tonight as poor workmanship by land developer. Let me explain. So I purchased a newly constructed home there in two thousand eight and encountered a blocked sewer line about two years ago. The area blockage was excavated and the crest line picture that was included in the package was what we found. There was a crushed sewer line by the dry utility conduits. And if you look at that picture, there's a little break where, before the red box. And then there was also, you can tell that the conduits laying on top of the crushed line are bulgy. You know, they're, they're sitting on top of that sewer line. So prior to excavation, I contacted the land developer and he sent me the diagram called a developer sketch. If you look at that, just for comment, my notes are the ones in red. So he sent me something and then I added those notes for for your information. And it stated, and this is from his perspective, that they only dig down three to four feet, the dry utility conduits. And the sewer line by city code starts out at six feet, so there should have been a two-foot gap between those two. I'm not seeing that gap, so so why was my sewer line crushed? So another document that I included was the Design Standards as Built document. And you can see the highlighted yellow, I put down there, note that the actual location and depth from finished grade of any other utilities encountered during construction shall be shown and noted in both plan and profile of the as-built plans. So I worked with your city's engineering department, city attorney, they've been very helpful. And reported the work was inspected, they reported the work was inspected, but no record available due to the age of the project. I asked them, well, what about the the as-built, do the deviation by the land developer? Shouldn't those changes be stored indefinitely? There was no good answer. So where, where are those as-built? Doesn't make sense to keep deviations from design standards forever. Why would those have been destroyed due to age? So here's where I'm at. I purchased a new home and presumed the land developer did their job correctly. I presumed the city did their job by inspecting the work. Both of these presumptions were false. I now have a five thousand dollar quote for the repair. It's expensive due to the proximity of a power vault. You may say, well, geez, that's just bad luck, and ask if there are any other homes that encountered the same issue. Or whether their homeowners in this development have a similar problem and just don't know it yet. Now I have a partial answer to that. My next door neighbor had the exact same problem and the home builder repaired it. And there's also another homeowner on three twenty-seven greens had a similar pooling issue that costs eleven thousand dollars to repair. There should be a question by the city council as to where else is this land developer installing new infrastructure in the city incorrectly like mine? So here's my ask to the city council. Halt all developments by the land developer and reevaluate the continued and future use of this developer due to poor performance of the greens. Number two, required developments have all dry utility conduits inspected prior to backfill due to lack of a submission of as-built of the improper installation of the greens. Number three, send a letter to all homeowners in the greens informing them of the situation. Number four, reimbursement to myself and the other homeowner for repairs due to poor workmanship and lack of required as-built when the construction deviates from the approved plans. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Kelvin. And I'm sure we will get back to you, the city will get back to you in some form. So thank you very much for your time and I'm sorry for your experience.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item seven, the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we accept the consent calendar.
Second.
And Elise with the second. All right, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye or raising your left hand. Passes unanimously, Sue. All right, moving along, public hearings. This is an administrative public hearing. Resolution twenty twenty thirty-six ninety, a resolution authorizing an alternative method competitive solicitation requirement for a four hundred kilowatt solar panel system. All right, let's call this public hearing to order. And declaration now, folks, of conflicts of interest or abstentions. Hearing none, let's move on to the staff report. Karen.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So tonight we're here to talk about the the four hundred kilowatt solar panel system. And we're requesting an alternative method to our competitive solicitation requirements. So for some background, the wastewater treatment plant has an average annual electric bill of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. Once operational, the solar farm that we're proposing will provide an average of a fourteen point one percent energy savings. With the successful award of the two grants that we received, the payback period is estimated to be about eleven years. That's a pretty good return on on the investment there. So staff is soliciting proposals from qualified contractors to design, fabricate, deliver and install a four hundred KW solar panel system. We're requesting the council authorize a solicitation, excuse me, through the design build method versus the traditional design bid build method. The design build streamlined project delivery through a single contract between the owner and the design build team. It saves money by transforming the relationship between the designers and builders into an alliance which fosters collaboration and teamwork. So per municipal code, three point two five, city council may create a special selection process. This is under three point two five point oh eight oh D hybrid contracts, which states contracts may be awarded under requested proposals unless exemption from the competitive bidding process with a design build contract. We would have to submit facts as supportive finding that construction improvement under the proposed method is likely to result in cost savings, higher quality, reduced errors or other benefits to the city. So basis of approval, the nature of the contract or classic contracts for which the special solicitation or exemption is requested. The nature of the contract is energy savings, infrastructure performance, and it has unique characteristics that are unlikely to be repeated. Estimated contract cost, price or cost of a project. The design build phase of the four hundred kilowatt solar panel project is projected to be about seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars with an estimated total project cost of nine hundred and fifty thousand. The cost will be offset by two grants that we received, one in the amount of one hundred fifty thousand and the other in the amount of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. We will also be receiving an energy trust rebate in the amount of four hundred forty thousand dollars for a total financial assistance of four hundred forty thousand dollars. So findings to support the substantial cost savings, enhancement in quality or performance or other public benefit anticipated by proposed selection method. So the design build advantage provides a time saving, so it minimizes project time while at the same time maximizing construction time. There's a cost savings in the sense that the contractor will be evaluating the budget and making suggestions for cost savings, changes and value enhancements as we move through the process. The design build contractor will evaluate major systems and make design recommendations to the project team about which systems are most cost effective, both to purchase and install and for long-term maintenance and operations. All these beneficial actions by the contractor will improve design, expedite construction and eliminate the potential of costly change orders. In addition, the use of design build monitors enhances the monitoring of construction costs during the design process to acquire cost savings when available and reduce the risk of cost overrun. So this project is a pretty technical project. And so this process allows for the complexities of the project and utilize the technical input from all involved through a team approach. Timing the market for the various aspects of construction can result in cost savings and ultimately keeps the project team on schedule. We also have a pretty tight timetable for this project. We have to be complete by March thirty twenty twenty-one based on our grants. So we don't have a whole lot of time to spread things out very much in this process. So criteria number four is findings to support the reason that approval of their request would be unlikely to encourage favoritism or diminish competition for the public contractor class of contracts. And so this exemption is not likely to encourage favoritism. Because this is a single contract that will be incurred through actually a competitive selection process. The design bill solicitation will be open to all interested and experienced contractors. And although they won't be going through a traditional low bid method, the contractor will be selected through a competitive request for proposals process. Nothing in this process limits the potential number of bidders. So as a result, exemption from the requirement of competitive building is unlikely to encourage favoritism. So as I noted, the proposed alternative contracting method to be employed would be the design build solicitation process. And the estimated date by which it's necessary to sign the contract would be signed by September tenth twenty twenty. The intention is to bring the award of bid back to the council on the September ninth council. So notification of the public hearing was put into the Daily Journal of Commerce on July first twenty twenty. We had received no comments on the proposal. So based on the findings, staff's recommending or request that the standard design build bid build competitive solicitation requirement be waived in favor of design build competitive solicitation method.
All righty, thank you. You said you received no public comments. Sue, have you received anything else or do we have anyone on the line?
Mr. Mayor, I have no comments for this item.
Okay, thank you. I will close public comment, the public testimony portion and the recommendation from staff, please, Karen, Karen.
Staff's recommendation is to adopt resolution number twenty twenty dash thirty-six ninety authorizing an alternative method to competitive solicitation requirement for the four hundred KW solar panel system.
All right, any questions for staff or council? And any questions for staff or council deliberation?
I just have a comment. I, we, we have talked about this since I've been on the council for 12 years, like, and I'm really super excited. We could have saved a lot of money, but it probably would have cost more and technology is better now anyway. And I'm also a huge fan of the design build. It, it saves a lot of time and a lot of. Moving parts, takes moving parts out of your hand, I guess is. So that's why I'm going to be voting yes on that.
All right, anyone else? This, this may be a tough question, Karen, but are you likely to see a number of bidders on this?
I'm expecting to see two to three. We've already had many actually asking questions. And that we were working through with their, through the grant process and that type of stuff. So expecting to see a couple.
All right, awesome. All right, any further questions or comments, folks? Alrighty, how's about a motion?
Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that we adopt resolution number 2020-3690.
Second.
Denise with a second. I think she got in there just under you, Jules. All right, any further discussion? Okay, I think Sue would like a voice vote for this one.
Counselor Pirros?
Yes.
Counselor Yonel Holloman?
Yes.
Counselor Martinez Blancarte?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon? Counselor Bacon?
Yes.
Counselor Finley?
Yes.
Six zero.
Thank you very much. All right, moving on to new business nine A, and this I think is Karen again, safe and reliable water future.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. We actually have a couple of folks that are going to be presenting tonight, not just myself, thank goodness, because. We'll get tired of listening to me after a while. So I'd like to introduce, that's going to help me tonight, Brian Ginter with Murray Smith. Ronan Nickgloria from GSI Solutions and Annie McCaskill from HDR. So they'll, they'll be chiming in at certain points in the process. So next slide, please. So the agenda for tonight is to review the objectives of this project. Actually, that we'll be talking about two separate projects that are kind of culminating together. An overview of alternatives, public involvement feedback. Seismic resiliency, evaluation criteria, alternatives, analysis, discussion, recommendation, and then next steps. Next slide, please. And again. So this project, we've been talking about this project for. About a year now, a little over a year now, and in September, the council. Adopted goals from phase one. That we've been using as we've worked through the phase two scope of work, which is the alternatives analysis. We are currently underway with that, finalizing that, and we've been doing community input and education. And then assuming the council. Has a recommendation for moving forward, we'll move into phase three, which would be preliminary engineering and implementation at the preferred alternative. Next slide, please. So phase two objectives were to select an alternative that met the goals of the council, which was two to eight MGD. If you're for future. And to define the feasibility costs and schedule factors associated with what those alternatives may be. So and then we'll, tonight we'll be looking to gain council concurrence and then we'll be back again to for our final report. Next slide, please. And here Brian will be taking over.
Thank you, Karen. So just as a recap from our previous presentations, based on the. Criteria of ultimately being able to develop eight million gallons a day of redundant supply. Really two alternatives passed that test and they are development of the Willamette River as a supply source. Either locally here in Newburgh or south in the county near Dundee with partners. Next slide, please. So the, this highlights the first alternative and we really focused on in the local option. Potential development near to the existing water treatment plant at the West Rock Mill site. And so this concept here has potentially use of one of the existing intakes that the mill owns or a new intake. At the river frontage and then development of a treatment plant near to the state's existing water treatment plant to treat the surface water. And also potentially, and you'll hear a little bit more about it later, one of the options for. Upgrades of the existing treatment plant would be to then combine those, those facilities, those two sources in a single plant. Some of the things to highlight about this. Option is that because it is local and city driven, you'd have control of schedule. There's some unique opportunities here to acquire water rights, property and infrastructure that could make this a very favorable option. Be easy to integrate with your existing supply since at least at this location, you'd be bringing the two sources in close proximity before they enter the distribution system. As I mentioned, there's an opportunity to increase the resilience of your existing supply with that development. One significant downside potentially is that you are dependent on the ability to acquire water rights, property. And potentially infrastructure to really make this alternative play out. We will look at other sites as well locally, but this really is the. The ideal location. And then this option also presents an opportunity for partnership with the city of Dundee. To help offset some of the costs. They also have a need to develop additional supply. Next slide, please. So for alternative two, it's development of a new intake on the river. Down near to Dayton and new water treatment plant. This would be done in partnership with McMinville Water and Light as the major partner, but also some of these other. South Yamhill County communities as well as part of the Yamhill Regional Water Association. The one big benefit here is it does give you access to not just one additional supply, but two McMinville Water and Lights coast range. Source that, source would be also available as an emergency supply. Once a pipeline was constructed to connect Newburgh to McMinville system there near Lafayette. The downside though is nine miles of pipeline that needs to be constructed to get the water to Newburgh. Dundee is again a potential partner here. And you know, the big, other big downside is just you lose control of scope and schedule potentially. You'll hear a little bit more about that later, but anytime you've got partners now, the city isn't necessarily driving things by themselves. Next slide, please. So we're going to jump into the public involvement piece of this briefly, and then we'll come back to talking about those options a bit more a little later in the presentation. We had as part of this project, two elements of public education and involvement. Community survey and then also one-on-one stakeholder interviews. Those were conducted by Barney and Worth, who was our. Sub consultant for this work and Tammy from Barney and Worth is in the audience tonight. So if there's any questions about that that I can't cover, she'll jump in and help out. The community survey launched in mid-April. We got about 80 responses, which is a really good number for this kind of survey. The kind of high level takeaways in terms of the demographic of response is that we got. A nice distribution in terms of time in the community. And then the other thing we learned was that. Good number of people do know something about their water source, but there's still the potential for significant more education to help the community understand the water system. Next slide, please. The stakeholder interviews, there were eight total and you see here the cross section of both community leaders and business leaders that. We spoke with as part of those stakeholder interviews. And again, those were one-on-one interviews that were conducted. Next slide, please. So what did we hear? The most important thing we heard is that. Nearly all of respondents feel like it is important to have a backup water supply once people understood that the city really has one single source. That really is a driver. In addition, safe, high quality water was important. Preparing for potential disaster was important and obviously cost and ownership. Next slide, please. So what we heard through the stakeholder process, we've got some quotes here. That you'll see, I think the three I want to hit on are one, that safe, reliable water again is an important priority for the community. People do value that. However, the balance of that is cost is always a concern. Major infrastructure projects are expensive. I think people understand that. And so cost is going to be a critical item going forward. And then the last one is that there is still a public perception around the Willamette River that will need to be addressed. There's a lot of concern about the quality of the water, especially in the vicinity of the mill where there is. I think a lot of long-held understanding or. Feelings about the condition of the river there. And so moving forward with a Willamette River supply source is going to require. Education for the public. Next slide, please. So the advice we got from stakeholders here is really boils down to education, communication and transparency. So continuing to let people know why we're doing what we're doing, why it's important. Really making sure that that's communicated and then having the process be transparent, having people understand how decisions were made to move this forward. Next slide, please. So in terms of suggested next steps, really it is about. Making sure that we're getting the word out as this project moves forward. It will be a significant capital investment over a long period of time. So people need to understand why we need additional supply. Why the Willamette River is the best option, understanding what the real water quality is, understanding what treatment can do for the water and then. Really addressing the cost and affordability question. And again, a number of organizations have offered to help get the word out. So you know, in this next phase and ongoing, a continued engagement with the public is going to be critical. Next slide, please. Actually, this is a nice segue into the seismic resilience study, which I think will help provide some context for why backup supply is so important. Andy, it's all yours.
Yep, thanks, Brian. So as Brian mentioned, while Murray Smith has been looking into a redundant water supply. At HDR, we've been looking specifically at the existing system. To understand how resilient is this system, the existing drinking water system that y'all have right now. There were, as you see on this slide, there were five major efforts that we put forth. Number one was a goal setting exercise that we went through. How resilient? Ultimately, does the city want their drinking water system to be? Number two, we did a geotechnical investigation to understand the seismic hazards. Number three was really the major effort of the process, which was understanding what are the existing vulnerabilities within the system. Then number four, spent some time coming up with some mitigation strategies to help address those. Vulnerabilities and then lastly came up with a recommendation for some future action. Next slide, please. Thanks. So apologize for the small font. You may want to zoom in a little bit on this one. This is a summary of the goals that we established for the existing system. Essentially what you find here is that the first column on the left is a list of existing infrastructure from. The source of the water at the wells through the distribution system and across the rows on the top, you'll see time. This is the goal for how quickly will the system be back up and running after a Cascadia earthquake event? So I will say that in summary, the city has adopted resiliency goals that are consistent with the Oregon resilience plan. So this is a standard plan for recovery that many utilities adopt across the state. And it's quite aggressive. If you'll notice. The, the green boxes on the far left indicate certain infrastructure, the backbone. The city would like to have up and running within a day after that major event. And if you even scroll across to the right, some of the green boxes furthest to the right, essentially this says within a month. The city would like to be up to 90% operations of the system. So that is again, consistent with statewide standards and goals. But still, it's a, it's a big reach as we'll get into here. Next slide, please. This is, you'll see the word backbone referenced quite a bit when you look through the studies and reports that we developed. Again, if you zoom in perhaps a little bit here, this is a map of the city of Newburgh. And the red line that you see snaking throughout the system is what we have defined as the backbone. That's important because that is a prioritized infrastructure that helps get the best coverage throughout your service area. So as you can see. As we designated the backbone at the southern end at the well field. To the north and east to the Corral Creek reservoir, all the way to the north at the North Valley reservoirs. And key points between all those, the idea is that with this backbone being up and running very soon after a Cascadia event. You've got a much better opportunity to serve the community very quickly with distribution points along that backbone. Next slide, please. All right, so we're going to walk through some of the major elements of the existing system right now, starting with the pipeline bridge. This is the bridge that spans the river from the well field towards the drinking water treatment plant. One of the major findings here is that. Based on our analysis of the materials and type of construction and age of the bridge. Our analysis says that this bridge will no longer be standing after a Cascadia earthquake event. This bridge is related to this drinking water seismic resiliency study because it also carries. One of two major pipes that goes from the well field to the drinking water plant. We estimated a planning level that likely tens of millions of dollars to retrofit that bridge to withstand a Cascadia event. So again, as we walk through here, I'm just going to give you a few data points of the existing system and where they stand. Next slide, please. The, the water treatment plant. Again, vulnerabilities on the left side of the slide and some mitigation efforts on the right. Essentially, what we find is that. The, the treatment plant, again, due to materials, age, construction. It is likely not going to be functioning after a Cascadia event. I will say that one of the concerns we had early when we were beginning this was wondering. If in fact the slope stability would be a great enough issue to where the treatment plant might even slough off and slide down into the river. That was not our finding here. There certainly will be vertical and lateral displacement of the treatment plant. But we don't see a catastrophic slide of the plant off into the river. Again, major challenges associated with that. What we have talked about from a mitigation strategy. Would be in these three major bullet points here. One would be installing a pipeline that goes essentially would bypass the existing treatment plant. It would capture the raw water which comes from the well and bypass the treatment plant into the distribution side. Again, water into the system, even if it's not fully treated is better than no water. So this would be a perhaps half a million dollar improvement to make sure that there is water. In the system in the case of a major event. And then again, at a very high planning level effort, we looked at. What would a, what would it take? What would the cost look like to rehabilitate the existing plant? So that it could structurally withstand a Cascadia earthquake. And here on the slide, we show we believe that cost to be somewhere planning level three million up to 13 million. To retrofit that plant structurally to make sure that it stays and can function as best as possible. That we measured against with this last bullet point, what would the construction of a new treatment plant be? And there we were estimating from anywhere from 12 up to close to $50 million for a new treatment facility. Next slide, please. Again, talking about the, the backbone, that's the prioritized. Pipeline threat system and the distribution systems. Our finding here based on. Material of the pipe as well as based on the geotechnical, the ground conditions. We estimate a certain number of breaks in those pipelines when a Cascadia event occurs. So here we're showing. More than 200 breaks in the, in the backbone, in the non landslide areas and then. Another gosh, 84 up to more than 600 in the landslide prone areas. Again, these are estimates, but they show that with these materials, we do anticipate some major breaks. The distribution system gets into the smaller pipes that reaches out into individual streets and households. And you can see that the numbers are quite great there from a estimated break standpoint. Next slide, please. And this puts some numbers in some more, some more words into the distribution and storage existing system vulnerabilities as well. Again, we know that we're anticipating quite a few breaks in the, in the pipelines. We also spent some time looking at the storage tank sites, again, at the northern and eastern edge of the service areas. And came up with a few mitigation strategies as well. I mentioned the pipe material earlier. If the city can spend some intentional time replacing cast iron and concrete pipe with more seismically resilient pipe. In the, I believe this is the backbone that we're looking at here. We've got about 37,000 feet. With a 12 and a half million dollar price tag to replace pipe over time to create a more seismically resilient distribution system. And then when we looked at the two different reservoir sites. We found an opportunity there to redo some piping and valves. That would ensure that these tanks don't drain when a seismic event occurs. With a little bit of work there, can make sure that those systems hold the water for distribution after an event. Corral Creek, we estimate about 300,000 and at North Valley with some additional piping there about 750,000. Next slide, please. And then, so that's, that's the bad news. That is the, those are the, the estimates, the estimated vulnerabilities that we see in some mitigation strategies there. And now comes the, the hard strategy of trying to close that gap to get to the goals that I talked about at the beginning. The first things first, we need to incorporate this seismic resiliency study into the water master plan. That is a, a near term action. And then comes some of these subsequent studies or potential capital improvement projects. This is where I think there's some overlap between the seismic resiliency exercise and the redundant supply study. To understand exactly where the city is going in the future and then therefore prioritizing. How to make the existing system more seismically resilient. I believe that's the last slide on the seismic resilience piece.
Good evening. This is Ronan and Gloria. So switching gears again to the redundant supply project. I'm going to talk about the valuation criteria. So as part of the, that project, the redundant water supply project. The consultant team worked with city staff to define these criteria to compare the two supply alternatives. That Brian described earlier. If you recall, we talked about these criteria. Back at a council meeting on May 18th. So. For this session, I'm just going to briefly highlight them again here and kind of just walk you through the evaluation of the. Supply alternatives using these criteria. Again, the idea of the criteria is to define them so that we can highlight the key factors and differentiate the supply alternatives. To come up with a recommendation for a path forward with the redundant supply project. So this slide here shows the first three criteria. There are six in total. Three of them are here. The ownership. Criteria basically looks at the city having sole ownership of the source of supply. City is a wholesale customer or city in a partnership with other utilities or agencies. And I think Brian kind of brought this up that ownership and control. Of the supply came up as a very important. Factor in terms of feedback from both outreach activities as well as specifically from staff discussions. And then resilience, just Andy talked about again, that's in the context of your existing supply. But we were looking at resilience in the context of these two supply alternatives. Basically their ability to resist or absorb or accommodate recovery from effects of a major hazard like seismic. But we also did look at other hazards of which I'll get into in the next future slide here. And then third implementation schedule, just considering how long is a supply going to take to basically be available? And what are some of the milestones to get to that completion of that alternative? Next slide, please. So the next two criteria here, source water quality. This includes both sort of the actual and perceived water quality issues at the two locations that. We're looking at on the Willamette River, one the local and then regional near Dayton. The other criteria is operational complexity. So that considers both staffing needs and how the newer second source could be integrated into the city's existing water system. And then finally lifecycle costs looks at both capital construction costs, which includes engineering and administration. As well as ongoing operation maintenance costs. So next slide, please. This just summarizes those six criteria again. Generally, we're applying these criteria more of a qualitative nature based on the stage of the planning assessment that we're in. Basically for ownership, the greater control and cost savings, the more advantage to the alternative. Resilience, the more, the greater resilience, the more hazards, the greater the advantage. Or implementation schedule, the more flexibility and implementation, the advantage to the alternative. Source water quality related to public perception and actual water quality. For complexity, the less complex and less impacts to your existing system, the more advantageous. And finally, and obviously with lower cost, the more advantageous to the, to the given alternative. So next slide, please. And so I'll, I'll kind of run through each of those criteria related to each. Each to the two alternatives. Could you go up a couple of slides, please? We'll show ownership. Think you might have to go the other way.
Sorry.
Sorry. He's got the punchline there.
Yeah, sorry. It's noisy in here. I've got motorcycles and stuff. What slide number would you want?
Slide 31, I think.
Okay, sorry.
Hopefully my numbers are same as yours.
There.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Thank you. So for ownership, the first criteria, you basically with the local Willamette, you have, the city would have sole ownership. Again, potential partnership with Dundee and then the regional Willamette. You could have a wholesale customer relationship at the sort of, sort of the front end. And then potentially a shared partnership with McMinville and the Yamhill Authority. Again, Dundee could be a partner in that as well. For ownership, the, the two key factors is again, the ability to have operational control of the source of supply. And the finance funding benefits with a shared partner ownership arrangement. For both the local and regional alternatives, the city of Dundee can be a partner. This stage Dundee's position is not specifically known, but it didn't really affect the scoring in terms of the way we looked at this criteria. But while the regional alternative provides some cost sharing benefits. Staff and consultants give the advantage of the local Willamette alternative because of the greater control the city has. And how the sources operated. And prioritize for, for use. There's also strong preference from staff for the local Willamette based on control from that, from that sole ownership arrangement. Next slide, please. For the resiliency factor, the key factors here include the ability to recover from or mitigate against major seismic events. We also looked at climate change, access to available water based on kind of a water rights perspective. Senior is that water right? And then also localized events, for example, fire contamination spill event that occurs. With in proximity of the city, city limits. Based on these factors for resilience, the regional alternative was considered to have a slight advantage. And this is primarily because the regional alternative gives access, city access to two. Other sources which Brian mentioned with the regional. You have access to McMinville's coast range supply as well as the Willamette River source. It's also located a few miles away. So there's some minimization of catastrophic impacts. For any localized events around the city. But these benefits are offset somewhat by the distance required to convey the water, which poses against some. Risk to pipeline breakage from a major seismic event. And lastly, the city would have some water rights seniority advantage with the local alternative. The water right associated with that alternative has a more senior water right compared to the regional alternative. Where McMinville Water and Light owns the more senior water right that's available for the regional Willamette. So again, just to summarize, in terms of resiliency, we gave a slight advantage to the regional Willamette alternative. Next slide, please. For schedule, the key factors include so legal administrative, design, construction and financing milestones. In developing the alternatives. Both alternatives would have to integrate the city's other supply improvements, for example, some of the seismic improvements. That Andy talked about earlier, but generally speaking, the development of the timeline. For both alternatives can be driven by its affordability and sort of water demand growth factors. Respect to permitting, design and construction and other associated costs. We're assuming that it'll take probably, you know, kind of a 10 year timeframe to develop the, the options. And conversations with McMinville Water and Light, they're sort of projecting about a 15 year window, develop the regional alternative with a water treatment plant. In terms of legal and administrative, securing the Willamette River water right and the intake permitting. Are the, the limiting factors for that, for the local alternative. And it's not guaranteed that the city will get exactly what it's, what it's looking for in terms of, you know, securing the water right, the capacity. And the permitting restrictions associated with the intake. So that's a factor. McMinville Water and Light has offered, just through informal conversations, that they would allow access to. The, the coast range, their coast range source, as soon as that transmission pipeline is constructed. So for the regional alternative, the schedule would likely involve coming to some phased agreement with McMinville. For a wholesale water agreement first, followed by a partnership agreement for future use of the, the regional authority supply. So just based on all these factors, overall advantage. Was given to the regional alternative, primarily based on the flexibility in implementing that alternative. And also because it has the ability to, to give access, earlier access to that McMinville source. Earlier in the development process. Next slide, please. For source water quality, the key factors here include the actual and perceived water quality issues. In terms of actual water quality, according to DEQ data. Both locations at the, the local one at Newburgh and then the one for the regional closer to Dayton are categorized as quote unquote good. Is defined under the Oregon Water Quality Index. However, based on, as, as mentioned previously in the discussion on outreach, their. Residents are aware of the mill operations and have expressed some concerns. Even from a perception standpoint about water quality there around the Mill Creek site. But as Brian mentioned, education. A lot of that can be, can be addressed through education. So we didn't consider a significant issue or disadvantage in this case. The regional alternative also does provide, again, as talked about previously, access to that. McMinville Coast Range source. So it does provide some mitigation if there's any. Blame it source water, water quality concerns in the long term. So regardless of that, we didn't consider that one alternative really had an advantage over the other in terms of source water quality. So we just kind of kept this criteria neutral, but we wanted to make sure to point out water quality is a. Just a consideration in terms of public perception. Next, next slide, please. Terms of operational complexity, key factors really are how the two sources can be integrated into the city's existing water system over time. And there's various ways a city can utilize the two sources in conjunction with your existing well source. But in both cases, there's assumed to be some transition time when the two new sources are built and expanded over time. With the regional alternative, it's expected that the city would transition to the McMinville and Regional Authority as a primary source. Moving away from the wells as a primary source, just because of the large investment that's going to be put in for conveyance. And that it has a much larger significant capacity that could be delivered. Long term. But the key factor here is the process to blend the waters for that regional alternative. When we're looking at, you know, three different sources with the wells. The Willamette River and then the, the coast range source. It can be very complex in terms of mixing those different water qualities within your distribution system. So even though you can, the city can leverage staffing resources from McMinville Water and Light to help with that transition operation. For the regional alternative, staff consider the local Willamette is having operational advantage. Because of the more complex operations for that regional, regional alternative. Next slide, please. And then finally lifecycle costs. The key factor here again, capital and O and M costs are both being looked at for a total life cycle, lifecycle cost comparison. Again, this is based on very preliminary cost assumptions for the two alternatives. We consider the local limits to have significant cost advantages over the regional Willamette alternative. Even though the regional wall, Willamette could end up with lower initial costs to supply, to acquire that initial supply from, from McMinville. With the construction of the conveyance line. Over the long term, expected that the build out of the supply as well as the pumping cost to deliver water from. That regional supply location. To deliver that water, the local alternative is concerned have a much lower total lifecycle cost. To be able to meet the city's redundancy and long term supply goal. So in terms of cost, we're giving it advantage over to the local Willamette alternative. So next slide, please, just to summarize. A lot of slides there that covered, so just the next slide again, please. Oh, sorry. I missed it. Can you go back one, please? Yep. So this is just kind of just snapshot of the criterion, which alternative had the advantage for the six criteria. So just based on our understanding, the local and regional Willamette alternatives to date. They both provide the city added reliability and of course at a cost. Ownership and direct control of the operations was a significant factor in how the staff considered these two alternatives. And so based on the criteria, the local Willamette alternative appears to provide the better value for the city. In terms of control, again, control ownership and from a cost standpoint. And so that kind of just summarizes the overall comparison. And with that, I'll just hand it over to Brian to kind of highlight the recommendations. Next slide.
So coming out of the, the workshop with staff, we identified the following recommendations. To prioritize the local limit, Willamette alternative. For phase three of this study, which is preliminary engineering of the selected alternative. Includes working to secure water rights and property, completing the preliminary engineering for that alternative. Continuing the community conversation on water supply and then finally engaging Dundee for potential local partnership. To understand how the city might fit in here. Next slide. And because they did score close and there is some ongoing benefit of discussion, we. Staff recommend continuing to engage with McMinville Water Light and the Yamhill Regional Water Authority for the regional alternative. That's a pretty low cost effort. It's mostly staff time to participate in the regional water authorities meetings. Continue some discussion around wholesale or partnership framework with both the regional water authority and the water in light. And then to look at the financial planning scenarios associated with this alternative. Again, until you start really into full design and construction, you haven't made big investments. So there's, there's no. There's no negative to continuing both here as we move forward into phase three, just to make sure that an opportunity isn't missed. Next slide, please. And then prior to review of the motion that Karen's going to cover, we'd open it up for any questions at this point.
Questions, anyone?
I'll just say, I feel like I. Understand it a lot more now. So thank you so much. This is definitely out of my wheelhouse.
Anyone else? All right. Let's move on to the proposed motion, maybe Sue or Karen.
Next slide, please. So there are two proposed motions that I staff was recommending. So the first one is moves to advance to phase three on the local Willamette alternative. And then motion number two is continuing to engage with McMinville Water and Light and the Yamhill Regional Water Authority on the regional. Willamette alternative. Uh, Willamette Alternative. I'll leave that for. The council.
And you'd like us to consider both motions?
We would.
Okay. All right. Um, any further questions, folks? Would someone like to make a motion, um, somehow following proposed motion number one possibly?
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Yes, I would like to move uh, for proposed motion number one that the city council. Advance to phase three on the local laminate alternative.
Second.
Uh, I think that was Elise. Yep. Okay. Um, any uh, further discussion on proposed motion number one? All right. All in favor signify by raising your left hand. And from what I can see, that looks like we got everybody. All right. Six oh, it looks like so. All right. What about proposed motion number two?
Mr. Mayor. I propose that we move um, to um, continue to engage with McMinnville Water and Light and the Game Hall. Regional Water Authority on the regional laminate alternative motion two.
I second it.
Second.
Jean got in there early again. Good job. All right. So we have a uh, motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right. All in favor signify by raising your left hand. Looks like uh, I think we got everybody, Sue. Yep. Like everybody. All right. Six oh on that one. All right. Awesome. So um, to Karen, Brian, Ronan and Andy, thank you very much. That was uh, as as Elise mentioned. Very informative, made it very clear and and thank you for all of your work.
Can can I jump right in here? Just one more. I want to show you one more slide, just to kind of tie all of the pieces together. Is my little amoeba thing, and I like to explain it because unfortunately, um, you know, all of the actually, or fortunately, they all tie in together. Um, this is something that um, I've we've been using for a while now, and I just want to kind of. Tell you kind of where we're at. So the seismic resilience study, um, you heard about that tonight. So that'll get incorporated in into the um, water master plan. So the water supply analysis, you've finalized that tonight. You'll get a final report um, in the next month or so, but we'll move on to phase three. The water white rights and infrastructure acquisition has been underway along with the property acquisition. The council's given authority for us to go look at some of those things. These all tie into this risk and resilience assessment that we have to do. The federal government is requiring um, all water providers to do this. We have to have the first phase of it done by June 30 of 2021. And all of these pieces feed into this um, assessment. So um, we're we're doing good work that all feeds back into that. And then also the water treatment plant, um, we were told by the water resources folks that we needed to cover our basins. So again, part of um, all of the information that we've received, the seismic resiliency and the redundant water supply feeds into how do we do that? What makes the most sense? Cost effectively to for us as moving forward. So we're not just doing something that. Um, is thrown away um, in the new near future. So I just wanted to let you know that all of these things all feed in together. And um, you'll be hearing more from me about water um, over the next year. So just be prepared for that. Thank you.
I love smart art.
Uh, I love it, although I'm not sure how much we want to mention water and amoeba in the same sentence, but that's, you know.
Draw and luckily the the public involvement folks came up with this drawing because mine was like all over the place and. And it was just crazy. And I just kept saying, I, how do I explain how they all fit together, but they all feed each other too. So. So thank goodness for the smart art as um, Elise said, and and the public involvement folks that come up with. A simplified way to explain what we're doing or trying to explain what we're doing.
All right. Awesome. Well, thank you. All right. Uh, looks like now we're on to something that we discussed earlier this evening. Resolution 2020 3685, a resolution accepting the Newburg Urban Renewal Feasibility Study. And directing staff to prepare the for council consideration, the appropriate documentation to establish an urban renewal agency. Mr. Rux.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so as we discussed in work session uh, in detail. We have been working really for about five and a half years on consideration of uh, urban renewal program within the city of Newburgh. And as we shared in the work session, uh, we've done a series of plans, our economic development strategy, our downtown improvement plan. Uh, transportation system plan updates, updated water plans, waste water plans. We. Updated our community visioning program. We did a community, I should say, updated our economic development strategy, did a community visioning program. Uh, we did the riverfront master plan. We did a housing needs analysis. And this year we're working on the actual urban renewal. Program and then also our economic opportunities analysis is when I shared in the work session. A number of those documents identified uh, urban renewals, a potential program. To advance all of those plans forward. So as we shared in work session, um, at before we got into the work session, we'd had. Uh, seven different meetings with city council, your work session tonight created number eight. We conducted six uh, citizen advisory committee meetings over the last six months. So really in January of 2020 is when we. Really started to dig in on the analysis on the feasibility of an urban renewal program. Uh, we've also been in front of the planning commission twice and provided briefings to them. The urban renewal area that's proposed is uh, uh, a little under 600 acres, 599.73 acres. Uh, if you want to be somewhat exact in all of that. The, we've done a a financial analysis. We've looked at different growth scenarios. That we discussed in work session at four percent, five percent, six percent and seven percent. Our consultant and sub consultant teams have worked to identify uh, costs. And so staff worked through. Infrastructure costs, program costs, uh, for an urban renewal program as we shared earlier today is that, you know, that's in that hundred and seventeen million dollar range. Uh, but in these different growth scenarios, there's a a reduction. We can't afford to do everything. And so we've talked about their other funding sources could be SDCs, could be grants, developer contributions and so forth. To address the infrastructure that has been identified within the area as a whole. We've had a community engagement occurring throughout the process. And as I mentioned, we did a fact sheet. It's been out, website has all the information on it, all the committee meetings. Uh, information is available to the public. We've handed out flyers. I've been doing presentations. When Ben invited and did one in Kiwanis, be doing one with Rotary. In August, talking to them about the urban renewal program. We've evaluated the estimated impacts on the overlapping taxing districts. It's always important to remind everyone. Urban renewal does not increase your property taxes in the division of taxes from the taxing districts. They're foregoing some of their property tax collection and it's redirected to the urban renewal program. Uh, the study identified that we were evaluating a 30 year plan. Uh, accordingly. The committee has come up with a recommendation. To the city council. And in that recommendation, uh, it is to. The council accept the urban renewal feasibility study and establish an urban renewal agency. I also mentioned in work session, and I will do that in the business session that I am doing outreach to the overlapping taxing districts. We did have. Three of them actually on the committee, TVF and R. Uh, Sheehan Park and Recreation District and the Newburgh Public School District. I have been briefing Yam Hill County. As well, keeping them apprised of where we're at. We did an early presentation in March and I've been communicating with the county administrator. On where we're at overall in our timeline. With that. I think I'll stop mayor. You've heard enough from me tonight already.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Rux? Oh, and I and I gotta say this, or for Elaine Howard or John Bridges. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding about those two. But any questions for Doug? All right. Hearing none. How's about a motion, someone? Come on.
Mr. Mayor.
Gotcha.
I move, uh, we adopt resolution 2020 3685.
Second.
And Elise, uh, Jules with the motion and Elise with the second. All right. Any further discussion? All right. For this important item, signify yes by raising your left hand, please. And I think that is all of us. All right. Very good. Thank you, Doug. Thank you too. Please thank again the committee and the consultants. Um, good stuff.
I will share that with the mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, now let's go on to uh, council goal, diversity, equity and inclusion.
Okay, um, as the slides come up, I just want to. Sort of try to tee this up uh, with this minimal amount of me uh, talking to provide as much time for you all to talk. Uh, but this, as you will recall, the council goal uh, is listed here, the further develop an operational culture that adopts and cherishes diversity, equity and inclusion. As core values. So next slide. Um, got some questions for the council and certainly this is just a kind of a starting point of of Q and A, but something to prime the pump. Uh, and I'll be at the end as well, but uh, what's the council's ideal outcome internally and externally? How would council imagine a successful program impacting the city, the community? Uh, what goals would council focus on immediately? And uh, would the council support adopting a resolution or statement as a catalyst for a DEI program? And what must be included in said uh, catalyst uh, resolution if there were one? Uh, so next slide. A little bit of uh, smart art maybe. Uh, now that I know that Elise likes it, I I might do more. Um, it's really just an attempt here to um, really kind of uh, underscore what we mean or or what. Uh, generally is meant by diversity, equity and inclusion. Uh, so diversity of people, abilities and perspectives. Equity and policy, practice and position. Inclusion through power, voice and organizational culture and uh, all of those things working together to provide a platform that. Is inclusive of a lot of different perspectives to better the organization, uh, when we think about it as an operational value. And uh, something that will better our community if we think about it as a community uh, goal. And. I think it's something that we want to think about as uh, broadly as possible, given uh, the times and the focus understandably on racial justice. Um, but also trying to think inclusively of uh, gender, of sexual orientation. Uh, ability and disability, um, age even. Um, so just that's sort of what where I'm, my head is spinning with all the the possibilities, but that's where I'm uh, thinking that we're going. Next slide please. You may have seen uh, at least some versions of this, um, and uh, definitely not my smart art, but someone else's, the idea of. Uh, equality, equity and justice. So uh, starting from the left, uh, equality assumes everyone benefits from the same supports and treatment. Equity, as you can see, it provided a a little bit more of an accommodation, something that allows everyone to see what's happening and and. Arguably participate at the same level. And then justice, which addresses the systems, the root cause of inequity without accommodations. And so uh, it's a. A sort of a higher state, uh, something that results in. Um, be able to see and do things without any uh, any boxes, any extra help. Uh, because we've actually really done the work and and addressed uh, the root causes. Next line. So uh, wanted to try to provide a little bit of a call to action, a little bit of uh, the history without spending too much time there. Um, you know, I think we're all probably familiar with some of these things as well as. Um, many, many others, I'm sure. But again, just wanted to provide some level of the idea that uh, in my world, government is. Meant to really think about or provide a a platform for uh, for fairness, for equality, uh, for equity. Uh, but that has not always been the case, not that surprising unfortunately, but um, there have been uh, laws and uh, government supported programs that have. Uh, actually reduced people's uh, ability to participate and to uh, live full lives and to have the same. Uh, treatment. And so, you know, thinking about uh, the historic Jim Crow laws. Uh, the segregated uh, education systems, um, redlining in communities through housing laws and and federal programs. Um, and disparate treatment there as far as what was available to uh, communities of color. Um, the idea that uh, there is and and has been throughout American history, a wealth gap and that continues to this day. Um, that gender based pay is still a problem and one that continues to to get attention, but. I don't think there's an equitable or equal amount of pay for uh, same jobs. Um, we have, I was thinking again of that huge list of of ways that we could uh, think about and address. Um, the DEI type goals and thinking about nutrition and and the uh, health and the social determinants of health. Really has a bearing on on uh, on equity. And so uh, thinking about how ways that we may be able to uh, address those things as well, um, systemically through the city. Um, human resources practices and uh, certainly uh, the infrastructure or lack thereof uh, for uh. The disabled members of our community who uh, may be uh, thinking about sidewalks and things of that nature that may be not able to get around places or access. Elements of uh, what the rest of us are able to access. Next slide. So unconscious bias, uh, this is one of the things that has come up over and over again uh, in discussions. Uh, recently around uh, kind of the attitudes and and the uh, the level of awareness that we all have. Um, and so, you know, what it is for uh, those unfamiliar attitudes or stereotypes that affect our understanding. Actions and decisions in an unconscious manner. And it's inclusive of all of the um, areas of that were already discussed in terms of what equity uh, DEI work might include. And so uh, organizations like ours may be able to address uh, the unconscious bias within our staff and within ourselves. Um, since it's something we all have, um, through training to promote self-awareness and through discussion. Uh, to increase the awareness and and understanding the literacy that people have. Um, just through dialogue, understanding one another's uh. Backgrounds and issues. And it's interesting, actually, just researching uh, a little bit of bias in general. Uh, it's also one of those things that people argue that uh, conscious bias is sort of the fight or flight and um, the idea that. You know, we're make snap decisions uh, with that danger detector kind of idea that um, conscious bias gives us uh, that ability to determine whether something is a threat. Uh, unconscious bias is unfortunate, is something that then creates a bias system that we're not as aware of, that. Uh, will also prejudice us against certain people, things. Um, and or beliefs uh, just based on on that snap judge, that same snap judgment, but we're not always as aware of of what's happening there. Next slide. So just wanted to briefly summarize what we have received uh, since uh, mid May, mid late May. Uh, since George Floyd's murder, uh, we've gotten a lot of public input, um, myriad requests. So we've got some. Requests for police reform. Uh, we had previously gotten uh, requests for uh, the flag. Uh, or now I guess flags to be flown um. For pride and had been able to find places to do that. Um, but I think that was just one symbolic gesture. And so certainly there are more requests there. Um, the ability to have access to our community is something we've had an ongoing amount of uh, input and decision making about. Specific to sidewalks and ADA improvements and that sort of thing. Um, we've gotten requests for training programs specific to unconscious bias and certainly to uh, all kinds of other uh, related. Things and and arguably, I guess, around uh, use of force and and other things related to police reform. And then, um, we've had requests from the public for general review of, uh, policies and procedures of the city and, uh, and how we engage with the public. Next slide. So thinking about, uh, attacking a, a goal that is huge and seemingly, uh, everywhere and how to make some headway on that. So, um, one of the ways that we're talking about doing this is, is as a, city as a catalyst. So city, uh, internally, the goal was focused on, on internal operations. And so certainly want to focus on, on that. But the other prong of the two-pronged approach being engagement with the community and working collaboratively. Um, my thought on it personally was the idea that, um, if we make strides within our organization, we still have a broader set of community, uh, members and, and institutions in our community that are maybe not on the same page. And so, you know, coming on the same, on the walk together, on the same path may help us achieve our goals and, and get greater input, uh, as well as, um, maybe help other organizations by setting an example. Um, one of the, uh, other, uh, recommended strategies is hiring an equity consultant, someone who's, uh, expert in this and, and could help identify as a third party some of our opportunities. Um, then others, uh, next one would be the internal equity audits. So gathering some data and presume that the consultant would help us do that. Um, thinking about data around policies and procedures where we have opportunity to make change, um, creating sustainable objectives, uh, so things that can help over time. Again, understanding this is a continuum that we're gonna start and will need to work on DEI forever, uh, because it will become one of our core values, um, and that we will need milestone objectives that we can achieve. And then, uh, creating an action plan. And, uh, to do that, uh, call to action, I, again, I think we, we would want council approval. Um, and then last is, uh, an ongoing training program, something that we would be able to, uh, build a reservoir of knowledge and, um, and make sure that we're prioritizing through funding for that, that training program. And, you know, want to have, uh, some, some direction from, from experts and probably be able to evolve that program as we go. Next slide. So thinking more specifically maybe about some actions internally focused, uh, the data collection assessment and, uh, publication, that was, I added, uh, publication of our data. Uh, so what I've seen and I think is effective is creating dashboard. Uh, so goals around, uh, what maybe our, uh, employee makeup should be, um, you know, how, whether we're able to, to demonstrably see some improvements there is something that we can share with public and, and create some goals around. Uh, comprehensive training program, uh, having core values, you know, identifying the, who we are in order for us to better hire, uh, people that will help us further our goals. Uh, reviewing hiring practices and procedures, that's something we've actually already started on, um, using internal staff and will need a lot more time and, and work on. But, uh, it's definitely something we can prioritize. Uh, communication and, uh, thinking about how we communicate with public and internally with one another, uh, really focusing on culturally appropriate language and trying to eliminate, uh, the use of, of derogatory language and, um, you know, inappropriate things that, you know, are just jokes and things of that nature that we need to start to wipe out of the, the culture. Uh, reviewing city codes and policies, you know, thinking about this as a structural opportunity that, um, internally, uh, we're able to have a huge impact on the broader community by, uh, bringing forward, uh, possible amendment to city codes, uh, things that may have an impact, either just in more inclusive language or in actual, uh, results in, in terms of the actual, uh, the, the enforcement of said codes and policies. Um, and then I think, uh, something we've talked about, uh, over and over again, making sure that we're more inclusive through translation so that we're offering more of our materials, meetings and resources to our full community and trying to do that as, uh, in real time as much as, as, as possible, given the fact that often what happens is we are translating something after we've published it in English. Um, next slide, please. So thinking about possible actions externally, um, we've already talked a little bit and mentioned the idea of the equity task force and I see that as an ongoing, uh, steering committee for the city, some input to our operation and, and to our, uh, proposed changes. And then it's also, uh, as was mentioned, the idea of walking the walk with other organizations. And so being able to push one another because we're on the same journey. Um, so hopefully something that, uh, having met only once, that we'll continue to meet. I think we've actually just had our, uh, second meeting scheduled for early August and, uh, we'll continue to, to try to flesh out what that task force's role should be, uh, with our partners. Um, through community engagement, uh, one of the ideas is to engage a different consultant in a listening project, uh, where we would be able to have expert, uh, help on dialogue and on, uh, really understanding and, and listening to, uh, community members, um, just as person-to-person and also in, in a way that can gather input that can help change the systems that we have. Um, one of the benefits of using the consultant that's been identified would be to learn the process of listening and, you know, being able to apply that in an ongoing basis. And so it's something we can improve our, uh, community engagement systemically by, uh, engaging this consultant. Um, having, uh, this is one that has come up as a, a complaint, I guess, in the, in the past is that, uh, we don't or have not had a, uh, place for complaints or comments about city staff or about city operations. And so, uh, we get complaints now in, uh, form of either social media posts or website posts or maybe the occasional, uh, you know, letter or email. Um, but really trying to implement, implement a very clear, uh, place for complaints, especially complaints around diversity, equity and inclusion concerns. And, uh, making sure that that's a, something that community members are aware of and can take advantage of. Um, and that those complaints are then investigated and, um, there's proper follow-up with, with those complaints. And then, uh, lastly, the police department-focused, uh, activities. Um, and I see that as external mainly because I think a lot of the source of the complaints has been from community members rather than from staff. So, um, I have met with the police association, with police leadership, and we've talked a little bit about the possibility of oversight and trying to flesh out what that might look like and how to put, uh, committee together, what their, um, their power and/or the parameters might be for something, uh, that would provide oversight. Um, trying to provide those listening sessions that were mentioned before, uh, for people also to understand policing tactics and, and their, uh, you know, essentially the, the material that they have, the, or the, the technology and the, uh, the weapons, I suppose, you know, that they have and how they use those and what their, uh, their, uh, general program is and in terms of the training and, um, and tactics. Um, and then finally a policy review, and that's something that, um, is called for in a lot of the, uh, the external systems that have been recommended to us, including, um, the, uh, campaign zero and, uh, and some of the other, uh, uh, I guess, recommended, uh, policy review actions that, uh, many of the national agencies are being asked to undertake. So something that we can review and, and gather more information on. Um, next slide. So when might this happen? Um, I, I'm blanking on my source here, but these are not my, uh, quotes per se, but there are, uh, things that stuck with me is that diversity work is, is messy. It's not a straight line. It takes time and it is a continuum, uh, speed in accomplishing the work. It's not about us. It's, uh, it, it's about us. It's not about the community. And I think we need to be mindful of the community and, uh, try to pace the, the work accordingly, which means we aren't kind of rushed to, to be done, to check a box. Um, it's, uh, at the same time, I think we want to set some, um, some timelines. And so, you know, hiring, uh, an equity consultant, I think we'd be able to reasonably get, uh, an assessment and a report back in about three or months or so. Um, we are able to immediately and, and start a training program and immediately and then to, you know, refine that and to build on it as we go forward. Um, an equity task force already is underway and I think then it's a question of what else we would want to do in order to identify the timeframe to, uh, to see some results. Next slide. So we're there, they, back to the questions and I won't reread them, but in essence, uh, now I would love to hear some feedback from council and, uh, sense of, uh, the direction that you'd like us to take in accomplishing this goal.
All right, folks, there you go. Here's your chance.
I'll be happy to start. Um, it's, it's no secret that this is something that I'm passionate about. Um, and I have a, a lot of ideas about all of this, but I think one of the things that I would like to see as an immediate focus for us is the audit and evaluation of all of our current practices and policies across every department. Um, what are we doing really well and what do we need to improve on? What are the most immediate things that we need to improve on? Um, I think it's hard to know where we're going if we don't know where we are. And so I think it's really important that we have a really good lens when we look at those things. Um, and then I would like to see some immediate work on engaging an expert to come in and do some of the training and conversations, um, within our departments and then facilitating some, some work with conversations around the community and with other stakeholders and, and people that are doing this work as well. Um, I think it's important to engage professionals in doing this work. I think in places that I've seen this work be done, the most, um, effective work happens when a professional is leading the charge. Um, somebody who knows what they're doing, um, has done it before and sort of has a, a broader picture of what things can look like and what they're looking like from sort of outside. Um, I think it's important that we start really working internally on the things that we need to work on. Um, you know, I think the conversation I would like to have across all, all of our departments is how do we come to a culture where we're, um, sort of fostering conversations about having checks on ourselves and the people that we work with and we, um, and we're spending time with, um, about things, about bias and some of the systemic cultures, um, of racism, prejudice that we see every day that we may not recognize. So I think it's really important that we start having those conversations and that it not just be sort of the go-to-a-training once a year and that means that you're DEI stamped and approved. Uh, but this is something that we actually bring in as our culture in the city of Newburgh. I think it can be done. I think there are a lot of people who want to do it in, in our staff and, and the people that we work with. So I don't think there's, I think this is the time to do it. I really do. Um, and I think one of the things I'd like to see is for us to sort of talk about what we would like our organization to look like in 10 years and then sort of backpedal and say, okay, what does that mean that we need to do now in order to get to the goals that we have 10 years down the road? Because I don't think this is something that's gonna happen overnight. I don't think we come to a culture like that, um, just because we have one conversation or one training. I think this is something that we need to look as a long-term, um, a long-term goal and that we need to put our money where our mouth is when it comes to really doing the work and doing it right.
Next, who next?
I'll go next, Rick. Um, yeah, so I think, uh, reiterating some of the points that, um, Stephanie just made, really, um, I think for me, what I think is really important is to be able to listen and create some dialogue with the communities that are, um, most affected by this. And I know that Rick, um, and, uh, Dan, we've been able to start having some community conversations with folks out there, but I think like you're mentioning, we should be bringing other folks, you know, who are affected, um, or who have other priorities as well into these conversations is really key and bringing in a professional, as Stephanie was saying, who is, um, who has the knowledge to lead these conversations and just taking a lot of factors in when we're going to be having these conversations, you know, a lot of folks, um, whether intentionally or unintentionally, their experiences have been long denied by, um, by our staff or by our city, um, or folks out in the community. So this is really hard for them to actually step up into these places and, um, tell their stories, tell their experiences, but I think that's really, a really key and important piece. Because although, um, I think a lot of the, uh, stakeholders in our community that are going to be leading or helping, um, with the Newburgh Equity Task Force, I think that the folks who are most likely to be affected on a daily basis by our actions and what's coming out of our mouth is, are the people who are the most vulnerable out in our community, who are not able to defend themselves. And so along with that, just really, I'm emphasizing the idea of creating a culture that, um, fosters like equity and inclusion really to its full extent. And whether that means calling out the biases, the microaggressions that are, um, being, is still continuously, uh, seen, I feel like through our social media or our community, um, just really implementing that. And then also like, I really like Stephanie's suggestion about like thinking ahead, like maybe 10 years from now, creating a vision and then taking step like, what do we need to do to get there? Because I acknowledge that this isn't in, like, and this is not going to happen in the next six months, but I want you all to know that a lot of the folks who are in these minority or groups, um, and there's a lot of them, have been living their, their whole lives through this. And so for us to think that there's a quick solution, um, it's just not realistic. So, but I do appreciate all the thought that has been put into this.
All right, who else?
I, I also, um, Stephanie said a lot of great things, so did Jules. Um, I do always believe you need someone outside your current, uh, community to, to kind of help guide people through. It just takes that step away and of course professional. Um, in, in, you know, I've, I've been doing this work a long time and just, just even the way we build, like, we build neighborhoods that say, "You don't belong here." You know, so you have, we have to be really careful, um, in everything we do. You know, I, I've been on, you know, Rick and I have served on all these affordable housing things and we hear, "Oh my God, not in my yard, not in my backyard, not in my backyard." Um, you know, God forbid you put a, um, a trailer park next to somebody and they freak out or build a duplex, um, you know, and these are things we really need to talk about because, you know, Rick and I have fought this forever. Like, our neighbors are our neighbors. I, I probably live in the most diverse neighborhood, um, by choice. You know, I chose to live here. Oh, and Elise probably does, yeah, very diverse. Um, you know, I made sure my kids went to Edwards because it was a diverse school, um, because I wanted to raise a child who just didn't know there was another way, right? Yeah, I, and the only way we're gonna do that is maybe, unfortunately, forced diversity until, until people just realize that, um, nothing bad, no one, no one's gonna die, you know, that, no one's gonna die from living in a diverse neighborhood. You know, stop, stop putting the, the pillars outside of the, uh, the subdivisions because that, that represents a gated community. Those gated communities say, "Take me out," or, "I don't, you don't belong here, I'm better than you." So, and there's, everything is like that. I, when I, my kids went to Edwards, the, um, people with less money would walk, people with more money would drive, the kids with less money would be inhaling the fumes of those. So that talks about the, the health, right, your health of the kids in the, and it happens everywhere and it happens all the time. And it's not always the things you immediately think of that say what you personally believe. Um, so I of course, 100% support this. I've, um, I've fought for a lot of things, you know, in my 12 years here that really called out, um, some major, major... things that we have done, things the school district have done and and tried to make changes. And it's going to take all of us looking through those lenses of, is this fair? Is it right? And what can we do to make it better? So whatever we need to do, you know, I've always believed it and I still believe it and I will do what I can do to move us forward. So internally, we have stuff to look at, code wise, we have stuff to look at. Employee wise, we have stuff to look at. Externally, it doesn't matter how great we are if our neighbors are terrible. So building, building, you know, all the other major, the hospital, the, you know, my doctor said if, you know, thank God, doctors aren't looked at like police officers because we kill a million times more people than police do because of fair unfair practices. So having our neighbors, having the the school, having the college, having the university, all look at it together and and all make a commitment to do better is is going to change the fabric, the threads that make up the city of Newburgh.
All right, Elise or Jean?
Hi. Well, dang, a lot of really good stuff has been said tonight. I guess not to be repetitive, but I am definitely in alignment with what's been said tonight. The only thing that I would really add is that I really, the data piece, you know, I think it's really important that we, when we, I'm assuming we're moving in the direction of hiring an outside equity consultant. And I think that that's going to be, just provide a fresh and real perspective of kind of what Stephanie said of where we really are at and not to point the finger at any one department, but rather to just provide a jumping off point for each department head to have. I know that's been super helpful for me during this time in a institution that also does not do awesome with diversity, equity, inclusion. So, and also I guess I'll just say that I'm really hopeful that that we as a council can provide a united front. There's obviously other boards in our community and the state, obviously at the federal level, that's very divided over this. And it's just honestly perplexing to me that there's such defensiveness around this when really, you know, what we need to do first in my mind is really just sit and listen and really provide space for people of color in our community and other diverse special populations to be able to have a voice. And I think a huge part of that is going to be creating safe spaces that are not the historical spaces that we've allowed for public opinion. So I guess I would just ask that for Dan specifically, that he provide our, the department heads opportunities to be creative around different ways and spaces for populations that are underrepresented to provide, to really be able to provide their voice. And then I guess the last thing I would say is, as we move in this direction, you know, that that we really as council hold each other accountable. And, you know, I just want to publicly say that anyone on this council has full, my full permission to in a public setting, you know, challenge me to be better because I think that that really is the only way to take a step forward is to allow each other grace and then also allow each other to speak truth in our lives. So, you know, a perfect example, I sent Stephanie something to review the other day and she called me out as speaking with privilege. And I honestly, it did not even dawn on me. I actually told Dan about the situation because it literally was a perfect example of I had no concept until she pointed it out. And then I realized very quickly, oh, that makes sense. Okay. So I just think that it's really important that we as counselors lead by example and really provide a united front because the people of color in our community deserve that from us.
Jane? Well, I certainly agree with everything that's been said. It, and I look forward to observing it as a citizen and new counseling, new counselors participate in this. It will not be easy, but I hope that you can all stay positive and focused and not be weighed down by whatever amount of opposition there is. But just keep your eyes on, eyes on the prize, to be cliche, but yeah, that it's, that it's all needs to be, needs to be worked on. And this isn't just about Newburgh. It's part of overall movement that, you know, we're involved in.
Yep. And I, you know, again, everything that was said, fantastic. I think for me, I think I do not, and maybe this is just because I'm a homie, I don't know, but I don't see any reason that Newburgh could not be considered a real center for equity and inclusion. In terms of the goals that you're talking about, Stephanie or Jules, and you all talked about it, I do not know why in a number of years that the city staff could not accurately reflect the population of this community. Right? I don't know what the impediment to that ever happening. I would love it for a place for for the city of Newburgh to be a model for others to follow as to how it is that we make our community as inclusive as we possibly can. And I, you know, I I think that the some of the talks of what we talked about, but I think, you know, as Elise and you and I have talked about this, I think before, we had this experience where, you know, if you go into a boardroom, and I shared this actually with the mayors on a call recently is, you know, if you go into a boardroom or a committee room and you find out, you look around and every single person there is white, might be a time to say, geez, why is that? What isn't happening that should be happening to get other voices to the table? I think it's incumbent upon us as leaders to do that. I I think, as mentioned, data is very important. We've heard that from the Equity Task Force. And we we have an obligation as a as a public entity to make that data, data available to the public. I think it's it's vitally important and that's how we find out, you know, simple, how many Spanish speakers do we have on staff, for instance, that kind of thing. And work to do better. And and I think the training ought to happen, as you say, immediately. And this came from the Equity Task Force as well, is that the person that does it needs to be paid. They are, they need to be professionals. It's not just somebody, you know, being asked to tell their life story and open themselves to their, you know, most sort of whatever held, most held beliefs for no, for no compensation or and I think that 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 needs to happen immediately. But I, and again, I think in Newburgh, well, as you mentioned, between the school district, Providence, Virginia Garcia, Unidos and and George Fox, we have an opportunity really to do something. And it may be that the city has to take a lead on it because honestly, we have more of an obligation to do so than really anyone else. If we can't do it, I I don't know who can. I I don't, I don't want to leave it to Google, you know, or I don't want to leave it just, you know, to be honest. I think, I think we need to do it. And, you know, first, I mean, I think truthfully, I think we need to continue to realize that, you know, our committees and commissions and our internal boards need to represent the community better than they currently do. And and so this leads me into another plug that I'll give you after and when we get back to talking about our next committee that we need to see. But so I don't know, Dan, did that give you, did that give you anything or did you, you know, how?
It gave me some good notes and and certainly, you know, I I appreciate, you know, what sounds like general or complete support for moving forward on hiring, at least initially, the consultant to do the assessment, getting, making sure we use the data, publish the data and, you know, provide some training to our staff. And and I think start down the path, right? You know, knowing that it's an ongoing issue and, you know, the reality as well. I mean, I just, I know right now we're focused very much on on race and racial justice, but I want to make sure we don't lose sight of of other groups as well and and doing the work. And so, you know, I'm committed to to the breadth of of the work. I mean, it's, my head has been spinning for the last couple of weeks on, you know, how big a job this is, but it really is the thing that will unlock the potential of all the other goals that the council has, all the other goals that the community vision had. I think probably all of our future goals, we don't even know yet, you know, because if we don't and aren't inclusive, but we don't include others, we're not going to be doing the full breadth of what we could be doing. And, you know, I I hear from the council consensus to do that.
Can I just add one more thought for the record? This is not a radical new idea. It goes back to very old phrases like liberty and justice for all. And we should make sure that people understand this. This is a return to who we are as Americans.
Hear, 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 Jean.
Hear, hear. I just want, we've been at Ford where I work, have been working on this for probably about five years, making sure that communities are bringing a diverse group of people in in conversations. And it's not easy, almost, actually, it's almost impossible. And and the reason we're finding is because the systems are set up, you know, for us, we meet at six o'clock at night. We're doing it for $10 an hour. We're, so it's, it's kind of made up, you know, to serve us. One of the things that they, that we've found, and I I might have talked to Dan about this, is that if it it doesn't seem diverse, but it actually opens doors and makes people feel safer as they venture into this new world of having their voice heard is that we've, some things I've done, some things we've worked on is creating committees of the diverse groups you want to hear from. And that way the spokesperson is not speaking their own story. They're able to tell stories from the group that they meet with it and it's much more comfortable. And it's a lot safer and it's just a way to get your your foot in the door and learn from each other without, without making someone feel very vulnerable about their own story. So just something to think about. We found it to be very successful. And we used to, we used to call diverse people the hard to reach. And we've changed that term now because they're not hard to reach within themselves. They're hard to reach for us because we live in different circles of influence. But when you, when you let them talk about their own circle of influence in your group, it 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 just makes them, it's it's more comfortable. So just throwing people in committees and making them token, giving them token seats is, can be really uncomfortable. And so we might have to think about also changing just how we do, how we do things. Are we going to pay them? Are we going to pay for daycare? You know, what are we, what are we going to do to make it so people can attend?
A good point. The other thing I I didn't hear mentioned, and I think we probably should, is that, you know, at one point we had Rosa on staff as Latinx outreach. We don't at the moment. You know, I'd like to see that explored again as to some way to
Yeah.
make sure we've got that that outreach. In fact, that was requested, I believe, in a call with Unidos at one point. So I think that's something we should look at.
Yeah, I would definitely support that.
What about Lincoln? What do you think, Lincoln?
meltdown.
Oh, no. All right. All right, Dan, are we good on that? You got enough direction, you think, or?
I think so. It looked like you had a public comment person as well.
Do you have someone registered to up for to speak on this topic?
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You ready?
Ready.
All right, Merrill, I'm gonna, hang on just a sec. Zoom. Okay, Merrill, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Okay.
Hello. All right. So much of what I planned on saying has already been said by you guys tonight, but I just wanted to reiterate my support for your goal on diversity, equity, inclusion and your next steps.
Are you going to stop her and tell her we can't hear her?
Yeah, hang on just a second. Merrill, we can't hear you. Her mute, mic is unmuted. I don't know.
Hello, Merrill, can you hear us?
Okay, can you hear me now?
There we go. There we go.
Yes.
Okay, apparently it was my headphones. They stopped working. Okay, uh, all right. So did you hear anything of what I said before?
Not really.
You supported.
All right. Yeah. So I guess what I was just going to say was, you know, much of what I plan on saying has already been said, right? But the, so the Newburgh City Council, or excuse me, the Newburgh School District recently passed an anti racism resolution. And I wonder about council adopting a similar resolution in order to move the conversation further. I know that you guys have adopted this as a goal, but I don't know if in fact, a resolution would would help move the process further down the road. In addition to training for city staff and the creation of your Equity Task Force, I would like to see the city hire a consultant who might better facilitate the policy, procedure and system evaluation, including recommendations for further action. And I appreciate the suggestion to facilitate ongoing listening sessions, so not just once, but just continuous from people of color that might better inform the city and council on next steps now and in the future. In listening to your guys' comments this evening, I appreciate what was said about utilizing an equity lens for everything, not only when considering staffing and departments, but also when looking at urban development and city codes, which kind of speaks to what was said about creating a culture. Council didn't touch on this tonight, but I do want to reiterate my support for the implementation of a voluntary citizens review board as oversight for the police department to provide a safe space for those who need to file a complaint. As I understand it right now, currently, any complaints must go directly to the police department or publicly in front of council. And I don't think this encourages those who have grievances to speak up. This is an issue that directly affects our community and I encourage you to make these changes in in order to help facilitate a more safe and equitable space. Thanks, you guys, for all of your time and effort working for positive changes here in Newburgh. And that's it.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, Merrill. Thank you. Thanks very much. And just, just for whoever may be listening, if you do, if there are complaints or if there are concerns, those can always be sent to city manager Weinheimer. They can be sent to me or the member of the council. So don't, you know, remember, not just complaints, compliments can be sent as well if you happen to encounter any of those. So, but do keep that in mind. All right, where are we now? Committee reports. All right, I'll lead off. I told you I would. So as mentioned, we currently have 66 volunteers, not including the five of you that serve on various city committees. Doug needs to impamal another committee, this one dealing with housing issues, and is looking for seven to nine volunteer members of the community. So if you all know people that you think would be good for this, their only requirement is that they have, well, I don't know if it's the only requirement, but the main requirement is that they have an interest in housing. That's pretty broad. But we are looking for it and need to know names fairly soon. So if you have names of people, please get them to me and I will either approach them or if you tip them off that I'm going to be, please let me know and I'll happily get that so we can get that committee set up. All right. Anything else? Anybody else with a committee reports? Anything else going on? Hearing nothing. You all are, you all are being very good now. Does Lincoln have a comment?
I was just going to say, I actually missed Visit Newburgh this last month, but they're doing, they've taken suggestions of council and of around COVID and also DEI, we talked about for reflection of our community. And so I was happy to see that they're working really hard. So thanks to Visit Newburgh. Thanks, Newburgh. working really hard. So thanks to Visit Newburgh. Thanks, Newburgh.
Yeah, that's good. That's awesome. All right, anything else? Any announcements, other comments?
Well, I have an announcement.
Jean, before you start, did I tell you you were really, really good on that video? Did we tell you that the mask?
Did I tell you that I did four videos and she only chose two?
Well,
She wanted to, she wanted to recognize others, you know, it was, it was going to be a lot too long a video.
That's right.
I may be starting a new career. This is my last meeting. I turn in my stuff tomorrow and I will certainly miss you all. I've enjoyed working with every one of you. And I look forward to being an annoying citizen with my five minute talks if I can.
We would welcome you.
Well, Jean, my, my good friend, I, we're going to miss you on this here, council. Your sort of voice of reason and your nice calm demeanor has been very refreshing. So we all wish you the very, very best. Do not be a stranger. We're going to hold you to those five minutes. Seriously, do not be a stranger. Bug us as often as you can, please.
First one's going to be about sidewalks.
Good. Perfect. Perfect. All right. Well, thank you, Jean. Thank you. Thank you for your service, right? Best to, best to Rebecca as well and the family. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Anything else? All right. It seems to me a bunch of stuff got done tonight. That's pretty good. Pretty good. So well done, everybody. Thank you. And we'll be back at it again. Oh, in two weeks or something. So otherwise, be well, stay healthy, wear your mask. Yeah, do good things. We'll see you. See you soon.
Thank you. Bye, guys.
Bye, Lincoln.
Bye.
Bye bye.